Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. The time is approximately 7:00 PM. We'll now call to order a meeting of the South Miami City Commission. If you could please remember to silence or turn off your cellphones, we would greatly appreciate it. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Yes, Mayor Fernandez.
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Bonich.
Here.
Commissioner Kaya.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you could please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Bonich. We'd ask you to keep in your prayers this evening the family of Officer David Carjuso, who passed away unexpectedly early this week here on Miami Beach, as well as the Chaney family, following the loss of Vice President Chaney. Madam Commissioner?
Ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a couple of presentations this evening?
Yes, we have two.
If you could read the first one, please.
Yes, Employee of the Quarter for Q3 Officer John Collins.
Chief, you're recognized? Or Madam W. Manager? Okay.
Good evening. I'm happy to present the award for Employee of the Quarter for Q3 to Officer John Collins. If you can come up. I'll give the floor. I'll give the floor to Chief Hatfield, but I just want to say Officer Collins has always been, since I started here at the city, very professional, exactly what we would expect. One of our officers to be exactly what we would hope they would be for the community. So this is very well deserved. And I also just want to give a shout out to Pliables, because aside from the $250 the city gives the employee of the quarters on their paycheck, they have offered free Pliables for all of our recognized employees. So you will receive that also. Chief Hatfield?
Thank you. It is a great pride that I present Officer Collins with Employee of the Quarter. Throughout this past quarter, Officer Collins has gone above and beyond the expectations of his role, consistently demonstrating professionalism, initiative, and unwavering dedication to the mission of the South Miami Police Department. His performance has been exceptional with impressive records of arrests, citations, field interviews, and community park and walks that clearly reflect his proactive approach to policing. Yet his impact goes far beyond the numbers. Officer Collins has shown himself to be a steady leader, stepping into the role of acting sergeant, and is serving as a field training officer with distinction. His mentorship has helped shape the next generation of officers, instilling confidence, professionalism, and a readiness in those he get under his guidance. Officer Collins is a role model whose work ethic, integrity, and commitment to both enforcement and community engagement set a high standard for all of us. His efforts not only strengthen our department, but also build trust and safety in the community that we serve. For his remarkable achievements and his outstanding representation of the city of South Miami, I'm honored to present Officer Collins with the Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I really appreciate this award. I'm honored. I am thankful that I've been able to do what I've been doing for 40 years. I've been doing this a long time. And I am thankful that I've been able to work for the city of South Miami for almost nine years. I have a great command staff, Chief Hatfield, and the rest of this staff is great, sir. Mr. City Manager, thank you very much for looking out for me, what, two years ago when I was injured? Thank you, and thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate all of y'all. Y'all are great. Anything you need, I'm here. I'm here. You call me, you flag me down. I'm, I appreciate this. Thank you very much. I'm not a good talker, but thank you.
You're doing a good job. You're doing a good job. Don't worry about it.
Y'all didn't have to, oh.
Yes, there you go. I was gonna say.
Thank you. You did not have to do this. I appreciate it a lot, okay? Thank you. And that is, thank you very much.
Officer Collins, there's a special person from your family who may be here with you. You want to recognize?
Oh. The backbone.
There you go. There you go. We can't, we can't do it without them, so let's give her a round of applause. Officer Collins, congratulations. Let's come up and take a picture, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could read item two, please.
Yes, Epilepsy Awareness Month Proclamation presented to Epilepsy Alliance Board.
Thank you. This month is Epilepsy Awareness Month, and we'd like to invite Luis to come up and join us. We present a proclamation on behalf, recognizing the month, and I'll just quickly read the proclamation and then recognize you for some comments. So whereas epilepsy is a neurological disorder that affects people of all ages, races, and backgrounds, and is characterized by recurrent unprovoked seizures, and more than 3.4 million people in the U.S., including over 400,000 Floridians, live with epilepsy each day. Whereas epilepsy can be, have profound impacts on individual safety, education, employment, and quality of life, and stigma and misconceptions about the disorder continue to create barriers for those living with it. And whereas organizations such as the Epilepsy Alliance Florida provide vital services, education, advocacy, and support to individuals and families affected by the disease. And whereas Epilepsy Awareness Month observed each November is dedicated to increased public understanding of epilepsy, promoting seizure, first aid education, and supporting research toward improved treatment and a cure. And whereas we wish to recognize the importance of raising awareness and fostering a more inclusive and supportive community for those impacted by epilepsy. Now therefore, I, Javier Fernandez, Mayor, along with my colleagues on the City Commission, Vice Mayor Ryan Corry, Commissioner Elisa Bonich, and Commissioner Steve Kaya and Danny Rodriguez, do hereby proclaim today or this month, November 2025, as Epilepsy Awareness Month. And without Luis, we'll recognize you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission and of South Miami. My pleasure to be here today. I am the seizure training specialist for Epilepsy Alliance Florida. And just to correct you, 500,000, 500,000 Floridians currently live with seizures and epilepsy. One out of 10 people will have a seizure. One out of 26 people will be, will be deemed epileptic at some point. So we are, we're very happy to get the proclamation from the city of South Miami. And I want to just commend all of you for reaching out to us and for us to be partnering with the city of South Miami. We would love, at some point this month, if possible, to try and get some buildings lit up in purple, if it's possible. And again, I want to just commend you all for thanking, I mean, I want to thank you for bringing us to the forefront this month and throughout the year and giving us this proclamation.
And if I could just ask, what other events are happening this month that we could participate, we make the public aware of and possibly participate in?
Sure. So we have upcoming events in next year. We have a lot of, we're planning right now a lot of things for November, but we haven't, we don't have everything yet set in stone. February of next year is our Walk the Talk for Epilepsy at Zoo Miami, Saturday, February 14th, Valentine's Day. And we're also trying to, what I do for the company myself is I advocate and I teach. I'm a teacher. I'm a former high school teacher. I go out into all the schools and I train teachers, parents, and students about seizures and epilepsy. I do short workshops, weekend workshops, daily workshops about what seizures are and how it can be managed with treatment, because there is no cure currently. So, yeah, that's what I do. I did bring some things for you, for the Commission, for all of you to have, brochures. I brought some pamphlets. I brought some information so you can all share within your group. And again, I'm very, very appreciative of you all being on board with Epilepsy Alliance Florida.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions?
Yeah.
You're recognized, sir.
It's a great cause, and I appreciate what you guys are doing for it. I think you'll see that the city and all its constituents and all its residents are really supportive of many causes, including this one. One of the things that you guys could do is maybe help us with your marketing campaigns, whatever you guys do digitally. We can help promote stuff. If there's anything that you guys are doing for donations or any events that you guys are doing, like you said, maybe next year, February, please come back and let us know about it. You know, the forum's here for you. You can just come and tell us your three minutes snippet of what you guys want to do, how we can help. We'll be more than happy to do so.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Commissioner's comments? Yes, you're recognized.
I was listening to what you were saying about lighting up our buildings, which I don't know that we do that, but I know that we sometimes light up the palm trees. So that is something that is available, should you guys.
Happy to support if you, if you'd like to give direction to do that.
Okay, so.
If that can be done.
Yeah. I think that would look very pretty. Okay, so then that's, I propose we do that.
Mr. Manager, if you can make that happen, we'd appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rodriguez, good? Okay. Thank you for being here. We'll come on down and present you the proclamation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any other presentations this evening?
No.
If we could move then on to, we do not have the minutes for 10:21? Okay. Mr. Manager, if we could have your report, please?
Clerk.
Madam Manager, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. On the event side, we have Sony Second Saturday coming up on November 8th. That's from 5:30 to 9:30. The theme this month is Harvest Festival, so there'll be good family fun and photo opportunities for the kids. The city is going to be participating in a Veterans Day tribute in coordination with the American Legion on Tuesday from 11 to 12. You may have seen that painting already started at the city's parking garage, and that is in anticipation of the artwork with Alex Mihares for the Art and Public Places, and we're hopeful that that'll be done before Thanksgiving. Thanks to Caring Miami in coordination with Commissioner Rodriguez and our Parks Department, tonight from 5 to 7, there was a food distribution that occurred at the community, at the Children's Clinic. And on Monday, the 10th, thanks to a donation from Family and Children Foundation in coordination with the mayor and our Parks Department, the city will be hosting a food distribution event at the Children's Clinic from 12 to 1:00 in the afternoon. These distributions are going to occur the second Monday of every month through March. And finally, just a thank you to the team for our Safe Streets event. It was great. It was very well attended. Public Works did an awesome job with the haunted house. So good that Town Center Advisory Board wanted to extend that next year and make it a bigger event. So good luck, Public Works. Heads up, that's coming your way. That's the end of the report.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Colleagues, Commissioner Rodriguez, you're recognized.
I, I just want to say I cannot take full credit for the Caring Miami. Yes, I did help out, but the initial idea came from Commissioner Kaya and Commissioner Bonich.
And the mayor.
And the mayor.
Teamwork, that one.
It was all of us.
Same on the, on the distribution, so, yeah, thank you.
So, you know, all I did was contact them and call them, but, you know, we all worked together to do, make that happen. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments? Yes, sir.
I heard there's a rumor after the second Saturdays, there's, Boogies are gonna have freestyle night. I think the mayor's gonna be performing.
Really?
That's what I heard.
Maybe part of your statement is.
Are you skinny, man?
Exactly. Thank you. I won't be wearing any skinny jeans, though. Thank you. Just baggy jeans. Freestyle night. Okay. Further comments, questions? None? Okay. Thank God, that report's over. Madam City Attorney, you're recognized for your report.
Good evening, everybody. We have two updates tonight. The first is on the Mandelstern site. So we're happy to report the fire access easement received preliminary approval from Miami Dade County Fire. So we continue to work with the property owner to finalize the easement document, providing for that fire access. The second thing is, we would like to bring or will bring to the Commission, hopefully December 2nd, two items related to that site. The first one is a resolution modifying the approved plan development for the school site to allow for the new conceptual site plan and expansion of those school facilities. And the second resa would be approving a development agreement with the school to allow for the new site plan and also increase capacity for student enrollment. So hopefully both those items will come on December 2nd before the Commission.
Can I ask on the, on the development agreement, what is the capacity expansion they're asking for?
Up to 200 students maximum.
200 additional or 200 total?
I think the expansion up to 200.
And what's the total, what's the total headcount today that's authorized?
I'm not sure, Mayor.
I'd like to know that, because that's not, that's, that to me is a new item.
Okay.
As part of the discussion, so.
So currently and after?
Yes, please, if you can.
What's proposed? Okay.
If you can get that to me tomorrow, I'd appreciate it. Okay. Anything else on your report?
Yes, we have an update on the third amended and restated interlocal agreement with Miami Dade County. This is for the city's solid waste disposal. So there was some last minute changes proposed by the solid waste department, and they were headed to the BCC today for approval. Fortunately, we worked with four other cities that were impacted on the solid waste agreement, and we had, we, actually, the department supported a deferral of that item. So in the meantime, we are going to work with the county staff to propose some changes to this last draft of the agreement. And potentially, there's two big items in that agreement. They proposed sort of a last minute increase in our disposal rates above the CPI if the capacity at their landfills is full or near capacity.
Which is near, near extinct at the moment, so, exhausted.
So that, that increase had no cap and no notice. It would happen automatically once the county determined that their capacity was at level. So we continue to work with them, and hopefully we can come to a revised agreement that will have acceptable changes to the four, five cities impacted by that, and it'll go back to the BCC in December.
And just one related note, there was also no exception. You'll recall in the agreement, there's a, we can dispose of what they call, I think, sourced, separated recyclable materials. So includes green waste and other, other matter outside of their system. They did not create an exception for composting, even though they just authorized composting at the county. And for us, it's about 40 to 50% of our residential waste stream is food waste. So we are, thanks to the good work of Commissioner Eileen Higgins at the County Commission, who authorized or has made composting easier. We are exploring some conversations with services that can possibly make composting part of our, our waste handling stream here at the city. And that opportunity would have been foreclosed, but for, I think, the good work of our city attorney and the work of city attorneys at, at some of the other contract cities whose contracts were expiring, raising these issues. And I want to thank Commissioner Higgins for also pushing for the deferral, since this is obviously an item of particular interest to her, given her work on it for the last two years. Yes, sir.
Does the interlocal agreement also speak about green waste?
It does. It treats it the same as.
It treats it the same?
It treats it the same.
So will we have the opportunity to bypass that at all?
We will, we can, we can divert green waste. We can tip it, or we can, we can process it outside of the county's facilities.
Oh, we can?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It doesn't need to be, it doesn't have to be mandatory.
No, it's.
Mandatory included.
The, the posture of that portion of the waste stream has not changed. So it's, it's just particularly with respect to composting. They had not added it to the exceptions to what they call MSW, municipal solid waste. Is that, correct me if I'm recalling the terms incorrectly. So, yeah, no, it's, it was a, an item that has made its way onto the agenda without a whole lot of advance notice to impacted cities. And the impacts go well beyond the contract cities whose contracts are expiring potentially. The language is rather ambiguous. The language on the price locks was particularly nettlesome because it references the existing capacity as of the date of the agreement, but did not allow for the possibility of them increasing capacity by expanding the landfill. So we would be subject to price increases, even though they had expanded capacity substantially. It also possibly arguably impacts the contracts of cities whose contracts are still in place. And most troublesome, the lack of price certainty and asking for a 20-year term as opposed to what's been a 10-year term historically. This is literally a mess. And if we're not careful, and I know that, thank God, we have a good team in the city attorney's office that also, their representation of other cities makes organizing around these issues springs out as a little bit easier, because we were able to get on the phone with Heidi Sarah and a couple of other folks who represent other cities, and quickly summarize the issues, get in front of the county with a show of solidarity, unity among cities. But the way this is being set up, the conversation's not advantageous to us at all. And we're trading, historically, when we signed these agreements, we got 10 years of cost certainty, right, for a 10-year commitment. We get, we do not get that in this particular.
Three years, right?
Uh huh.
Did they get three years?
We don't even get three years. I mean, it's whenever the, as I, whenever the capacity expires at the landfills, you're no longer, you don't, you don't, you don't no longer get the benefit of the contract rate. So I think we have to have a conversation about whether this agreement's worth signing at all, honestly.
And if I could add just further, so if they propose these disposal fee increases without a cap, there is no mechanism currently for the city to terminate the agreement. It has to be terminated by mutual consent of the county and the city.
Which will never happen.
There's no exit if the fees go high.
So they're trying to lock up capacity for a put contract for whatever facility they want to build at our, frankly, I think at our expense. And it's, you know, we probably need to have a conversation about whether we need to look at going beyond the county for some relief, because I'm not sure that this is going to get resolved at the local level, right?
You know, speaking of relief, do we, have we had an update? Obviously, it's probably just been already erased from their memories, but the trash by rail opportunity with the agreement, has, that's pretty much dead?
It's pretty much dead. I, I, you know, they have not responded to our offer. I've inquired, I think staff has inquired as well. They're supposed to be setting up a site visit. They actually are coming tomorrow. Okay, they're coming out tomorrow to see the site, so maybe there's a glimmer of hope that that gets resolved.
Who's coming?
Alicia Daniels, I believe, and Roy Coley and the team at Solid Waste at the county are coming out to see the site. You know, I, I think there are some real opportunities for us to consider working with Coral Gables on, you know, again, we were talking at one point about taking the resources to improve our public works yard. You know, we may want to consider just taking our full three acres, using it for this purpose, and talking to Coral Gables about some sort of interlocal, and relocating our public works facility onto their campus, because they've got a pretty sizable campus. So I think there are those opportunities, but we'll see if there's any interest on the part of the county of, of developing a facility on our, on our public works yard for waste to rail.
What about the ability with the other cities that we just joined in on here, on this conversation with the BCC?
So just statutorily, the county can close the system, and they control, they control how the rules are set up around disposition within the county. So unless there's a statutory change that allows us to kind of, through an interlocal, have cities work together to set up their own system, you know, we're really, we're really stuck under whatever framework the county articulates. Right now, that framework, as it's being set up, doesn't provide us any guarantees on costs. And, you know, that is our biggest, I mean, again, just as you all know, the transfer fees that we are forced to pay now, roughly $120,000 a year, you know, what, I think that's, that's half of a, half of a mil roughly, or 40% of a mil, a tenth of a mil, excuse me. So all of these costs begin to add up, and we're looking at substantial cost escalation with our operations and disposition side, depending on where we're forced to take trash in the future.
If I may, Mayor, yeah, there was a CPI annual 4% cap on the disposal fee.
While there, while, while there was capacity.
But with the latest change, that changed. And so now there is no cap. If, if they achieve capacity in the landfills, there's no cap on what they could charge the.
Well, I, I always read the same, I always read the same way. I thought that there was no cap. There was a CPI cap while there was capacity, but after the capacity expired, you were at the will of the market.
Correct.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
With what you said right now about the canyon controlling, we wouldn't be able to, and this is a long shot, we wouldn't be able to set up our own system to get rid of our own trash?
No, we have to, by virtue of the local ordinance, that's, I think, supported by, correct me, Madam City Attorney, if I'm wrong, that's based on the existing statutory framework. The county sets the rules, and whether we have a contract or not, we have to take our trash to be, I mean, our residential solid waste to be disposed at one of their facilities. The only advantage that signing the contract provides us is that while they're, well, historically, we get the benefit of a discount because we make a long-term commitment, and they give us a lower contract rate. So typically, it's about a 20 to 25% savings. That model is still embedded in this current contract, with the exception that once it hit capacity.
Which is.
We're at the market. So we get a very limited amount of cost certainty for a very long term. Obviously, you can understand why that makes no sense. So, yes, ma'am. Sir, excuse me.
I think, you know, with these, with these increases in prices, I think it might be prudent for us to explore, and I know, I know, I'm not going to be, this isn't a fan favorite thing to say, but exploring the idea of maybe reducing the recycling pickups from once every week to every other week. Because in there, we will have a cost savings to the.
So I think, that's, so I think one of the, the reason the composting issue is particularly important is because if we can, if we can get that included as an exception to the requirement to dispose of it at a county facility, we can divert it and reduce our total tipping fees, which should save us a substantial amount of money. So let's just say it's 40% of our, our total load today. So that exception is something we need to push very strongly for. And I think if we don't get the kind of relief we want, ultimately, I would suggest, after this conversation plays out, we may want to have a conversation about whether we want to, as a group of cities, go to the legislature and ask our delegation to, for, for counties that are capacity constrained, which I would conclude Miami Dade County in that definition, whether they allow us to set up our own systems for purposes of creating more predictability and, and having some more control over, over costs. That's going to make the county's job all the more difficult, so it's not a conversation we should embark on lightly. But the current posture of the agreement is a very poor one for us, is what I would say. Further questions, Madam City Attorney? Comments? Anything else, Madam City Attorney?
Just one further comment. We'll keep you apprised of our negotiations with the county and see if we're able to get those revisions that we need. So we'll keep you posted on that.
Yeah, hopefully we'll have some certainty by the 18th, if possible. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll conclude this city attorney's report and open up the floor for public remarks. I've got a few names signed up for public remarks. Mr. Grace, you're first on the list. Please come forward. Turk, you're recognized.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Grace and I am one of the organizers of the SOMI Art Festival. We are entering now into our 41st SOMI Art Fest that will be held on February 22nd and 23rd of 2026. We are here to request a waiver of fees for this year as to the resolution that is in front of you. We are a small but mighty group of volunteers that put this event on every year. I often say there are 20 of us who are members of the South Miami Rotary Club and not one of us lives in South Miami. And yet, we are dedicated and committed to putting this event on every single year with hundreds of hours that go into putting it on. We are also very proud to say that we have 120 spots for artists. At this point, with three weeks left to go, we have 170 applications for artists. This is from right now, as of the last time I looked, 14 states. Where we have, South Miami has a reputation of putting on one of the best art festivals in the country. And that's why we have these individuals from all over the country wanting to come here to display their works and to experience what South Miami has to offer. And we are pleased to be able to do that every year. And the other thing is that we, we do surveys of all of the, not of all, but of many of the patrons who come that weekend. And the one thing that we hear over and over again is that everyone loves the fact that it is a family-friendly event. And that's what sets us apart from some of the other art festivals, that some of them are for-profit, ours is not-for-profit. And we look forward to that and we love the working relationship that we have with the city. And we are looking forward to the next couple of years in planning and how we can continue the festival with all of the changes happening on Sunset and with Sunset Place.
Thank you, Mr. Grace. Thank you for organizing the event. You guys do a spectacular job. Commissioner Kaye, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a quick question, since you're here. With so much demand, and I think that's the most we've ever heard from the arts festival, is there a need or anything that you guys need more space? Is that something that we can work with some of our retailers, you know? Is that something that you guys are looking for, that we can probably help with?
It's not, because while, you know, one of the things that we're really trying to do is to always continue to increase the quality of the artist. And that will happen in the next couple of weeks when we start to go through and, and we select who can come. The nice part is, is it's always good to be able to say, "Thank you, but no thank you", and want people to continue to want to be here.
Any further questions, Mr. Grace? Will we have any? Okay. Thanks again. We greatly appreciate your contribution.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, you're recognized. Good evening.
Hello, Jason Lopez, 7730 Southwest 65th Place. I'm here for two reasons. First, glad Mayor Stoddard is in the background. I'm here to urge you to restart the Urban Landscape Committee that we started in 2010. I think with the large investment in trees that's about to happen, everything going on with Gene Willis, connecting to the underlying 6540 Manor Lane, there's a need to make some smart investments back into the plants for South Miami. There's a broader term that you hear pretty regularly called Florida-friendly when it comes to plants. I think we can make a South Miami-friendly concept and, you know, help in a lot of ways. Secondly, I'm here to mention, you know, I know you guys are talking about 6540 today and its future use. I don't know how broad or centered that is. I hope that it's to consider it as a park. If it is to consider it as a park. I think that the neighborhood has made it pretty clear in all the conversations that I've had with them in the past year that we've been doing this, and that we, we want a simple space. We don't want an overbuilt space that has a lot of structures and has a lot of things going on. That particular spot has a lot of history for South Miami. If you think about it, just about every resident of South Miami that's ever lived in South Miami has gone down that way once they built that bridge. It is definitely the entrance to our neighborhood. And so keeping it open to visibility, being able to see around the corner what's coming around US 1 and all these different things is really important. I think we can do a really logical landscape plan in there that does not include a lot of future upkeep and maintenance. I think that there are smart plant choices you can make, that limit growth and height and whatnot, so that we're not always in there needing more and more resources from the city to take care of the space. I'm not suggesting Van Smith Park, but I am suggesting a, you know, there's plenty of ornamental natives that you can use. The Institute for Regional Conservation exists and on their website is the natives for your neighborhood. You can go in there, you can put in 33143, and it'll tell you a whole list of plants that used to live here. If we work from that group of plants, we will not be setting up a bunch of need for fertilizers and irrigation and trimming and all this kind of stuff. And so I'm hoping that we can turn 6540 into, I once heard, Centennial Park for the city of South Miami. Makes a lot of sense. We're about to turn 100. And I hope we can keep it a simple space without overdeveloping it. Thank you.
Jason, before you leave, again, just to make sure I got the name right, Institute for Regional Conservation?
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Natives for your neighborhood.
Glad I got, thank you. Okay, next on the list, Mayor Stoddard. You're recognized, sir.
Good evening. Philip Stoddard, 6820 Southwest 64th Court. I'll just reinforce what Jason said. We used to have an Urban Landscape Committee. It did a wonderful job for us and we are very fortunate to have Jason as a professional horticulturist with a passion for native plants. So when you get, when you get an expert who'll work for you for nothing, grab him. Excellent idea. I first wanted to address M4, the Sustainability Guidelines. My wife, Dr. Gray Reed, and I both submitted comments five weeks ago that did not appear in your draft tonight. It's a very good idea and I totally support what it is. I do want to see it amended and corrected because the, what you have there is suitable for a temperate environment. It would be good in Colorado or Wisconsin, but not Miami, Florida. Our sun angles are different, our humidity is different. And you have an expert, Dr. Gray Reed, who actually taught this stuff until she retired last year. So there's very good resident expert help to assist you. Regarding solar, I understand the moratorium. Part of the issue is insurance. I was hoping we'd have some numbers by tonight on which insurance, you know, what fraction of insurance companies are solar hesitant?
Mayor, I think just to disabuse everyone of that notion, that I would personally, that was not the reason for the moratorium.
Okay.
The reason for it was that we learned that it was not being applied. So we had an ordinance that was not being enforced in our building process. Apparently, we had a conversation two and a half years ago and it was interpreted by a line reviewer, meaning that there was no mandate in place anymore. So that was really the reason. I spoke to some other residents about that this morning.
Oh.
Who asked me about it, so I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for, thank you for the clarification.
So, you know, we've had that discussion before about, about insurance, but quite honestly, we were in this posture because there was a, an error.
A glitch, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, the insurance thing is a legitimate issue that has to get worked out. And Commissioner Kaye and I talked about this at some length. Trash reduction. My family composts, we have like, you know, put out five pounds of trash every week, but our recycle bin is pretty heavy. And I'm really careful about only putting in the appropriate things. I just wheeled it out to the curb this evening and if I had to take two weeks' worth, Commissioner Rodriguez, I would, I would struggle to, to do that, particularly with my torn rotator cuff muscle. So I would love to keep the recycling at once a week, but I'd be happy to go back to once a week trash pickup. The last thing is that there are zero-waste experts who would be delighted to, to help us figure out how to, how to do our trash better. And, I mean, to your point, Mayor, that's, that, yes, indeed, we could do some really good stuff. And I'm so appreciative that you're thinking about this constructively. So thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I've got John Edward Smith next on the list. And he's the last name I have, so if there's anyone else who'd like to address this committee, this commission and public remarks, please come forward. You can sign up with John. Madam Clerk, if you could check online in a minute, we'd appreciate it. Sir, good evening.
Okay, your name is the mayor, members of the commission, John Edward Smith, observing 52 years on 64th Court and a business owner in South Miami as well. I'd like to start my remarks this evening by commending the team for organizing the Safe Streets Halloween. It was an exceptional experience. It was particularly enjoyable to see a number of the parents dressing up as well with their kids. I think that was really a lot of fun to see that. It reflects how a family-friendly community environment here in South Miami. I was asked by staff when the event was started, and my best recollection is that it started in 1984 with the South Miami Hospital. At their location, they had a Halloween event. And then eventually, we moved it to Sunset Drive. I think initially, it was only on the sidewalks and then, you know, obviously, the street was closed. But that's some of the history of it anyway. I would also like to acknowledge the fact that the earth is round and you don't fall off the edge when you cross Red Road into the land of Dade County and Coral Gables. I was delighted to see our elected officials and marketing team at the ribbon cutting for Boulangeray a few weeks ago. It wasn't too long ago when Jakes opened a restaurant where Shula's 347 and now Beauty and Apucher is, where they promoted themselves as located in the heart of South Miami. And it's a corner in Coral Gables.
We're happy to claim it, John.
Yeah, I know. For 20 years since founding what is today's SOMI Magazine, the concept of Town Center was promoted, a designation by the Mayor's Marketing Task Force in the mid-1990s, bringing the synergy and dynamics of the businesses together in the area, our Red Sunset community. I understand that with tax dollars being spent on city marketing initiatives, that East of Red Road was not on the map. I'm glad to see we're attempting to make that right and to appreciate our wholeness. On another subject, this is the proposed redevelopment of the City Hall property. Over the last five decades of my professional career, I believe I've been seen as a collaborator, a convener, a consensus builder. However, what I am, what I am to address this evening, some might consider me to be a curmudgeon. On November 8th, 2016, I voted along with an overwhelming majority on the following straw ballot initiative. Should the city use the value of the existing library and/or city hall and police station property as fully funded at no cost of the taxpayer, the construction of an environmentally sound and more efficient city hall, police station and/or library and other possible improvements to the city, such as sewer connection for residents in low-lying neighborhoods currently on septic tanks, park improvements, or tax reduction? In listening to the presentations and discussions regarding the development of our city hall property, I am particularly concerned about one item, and that is the Silver Martin Building. I had reservations about the conveyance, I also have reservations about the conveyance of park space to be garnered for development purposes. I have a printout of an article published in SOMI Magazine in 2014 as part of our series of historic buildings in South Miami, and I would like to provide this now for your edification and request that it be part of the record.
Okay. John Edward, can you share a copy of the ballot language you referenced? Because I'm, can you also leave a copy of the ballot language, if you have it?
The ballot language?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
To quote from the article, "The city of South Miami enjoys a somewhat modest inventory of architecturally and historically significant structures in the shopping and dining district. Thanks to the efforts of concerned city and county citizens, the preservation of structures representing the tastes, styles, and concerns of these that come before us survive to provide our city with an identity uniquely its own." I've heard elected officials talk about moving the building and even demolishing it, while saving some pieces to be used as homage toward our history. This is appalling and disrespectful to our history. As it regards moving the building, I might suggest you ask Don Sleznick, former chair of the Dade Heritage Trust, about moving a coral rock building. I remember seeing such an attempt literally fall apart. And demolishing it, it seems like we have our own east wing story right here in little old South Miami. Either option is not viable, in my considered opinion, in dealing with the proposed redevelopment, and I stand in opposition to this. I would respectfully ask to press the pause button and see how we can incorporate the Silver Martin Building as part of our civic space in any reconfiguration of the city hall property. There is not time to present this tonight. However, I am available to present this at another time, and I thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, sir, anyone else who'd like to address this commission and public remarks that's in the audience?
Anyone on Zoom, please raise your virtual hand.
Okay, seeing no one in the audience, is there anyone online?
No.
One last time?
No.
Okay, seeing no one online, we'll close public remarks. Let's move on with the agenda for today. Collins, if you have no objection, I'd like to call up item number three, which is the arts festival item, and then I'll move on to the discussion on M5, since I do believe we have got some of our design professionals here in the building. And without objection, again, we'll move on to five, followed by M4, since we have some folks in the audience on that issue here, and the moratorium. Okay? Does that seem like a good way to proceed? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could read item three for the record, please.
Yes, item three, a resolution of the Marion City Commission of the city of South Miami, Florida approving and authorizing the waiver asserting a bit related fees. and authorizing the waiver asserting related fees and costs in amount not to exceed $16,526 pursuant to Section 15B-6 of the city code for a special event known as the SOMI Art Fest presented by the Rotary Foundation of South Miami, to be held Saturday, February 21st, 2026, and Sunday, February 22nd, 2026, on Sunset Drive between Red Road and US1.
Colleagues, does anyone need a presentation on this item from staff? Or are we clear on the request?
Clear.
Okay. Mr. Grace, thank you for being here this evening. Is there a motion on item three? Would anyone like a cookie?
I'll move the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So a motion by Commissioner Kaye, a second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any comments before we vote? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Kaye?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonish?
Sorry, I was just looking at it. Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. If we can read item... Now, I've lost track of where I was.
Five.
Second. If we can read item M5, please.
M5, okay. M5, Report on Negotiations for Construction of Southwest 63rd Court Bridge over Twin Lake Canal Replacement Project and Feasibility of a New Bridge.
Mr. Munoz in his fabulous tire wrecking vest.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's available. So Alex Munoz, Director, Public Works. You do have a report, M5, in your kit, your agenda kits, that walk you through the details on the bridge discussion. This is just a report. It's not an action item. We would have to follow up with an action item subsequent to any guidance here. Probably two action items, one for design and the other one for construction. So just to address the guidance that we've gotten, especially in some of the strategic sessions and goal sessions, and also discussions at the commission, we put this report together to walk you through where we started and, you know, where we are today, especially based on the board's guidance. So the bridge bid was advertised in January of 2025 this year. Design started way before that. As you all know, the one lane has been closed since October of '23. So we advertised, we got those solicitations... Yeah, '23. We advertised, we got the solicitations in. During that time, we reviewed, and a decision was made that the proposals were not responsive using state statute. After the proposals were deemed non-responsive, it allows you to negotiate directly based on the fact that you got non-responsive proposals. We began negotiations after the proposals were rejected with one of the proposers that had significant experience in bridge building. That has been going on for quite a while, which has been good in the sense that it's been a collaborative process with the engineer, the bridge builder. Jose here from EXP has been very involved in those as well. And that process has led us to the ability of putting a proposal together that considers a lot of the onsite conditions and what's there, and gets us as much of an improved proposal and project, and still following the guidelines of doing a refurbishment and bridge. That refurbished bridge, the one that we're thinking about doing, we had talked about this, you'll remember, there was a big concern on the lifespan of that bridge, and we had those discussions here. Based on the approach that we're doing now, it's a significantly improved lifespan, and that's in your report. And it's a lot of it has to do with the approach of the top deck, and we're looking at lifespan based on what the engineer of record has told us, which is not Jose, it's SRS, 75 years. Actually, it's a sub of SRS, 75 years. So the benefits of the... There was two approaches. We looked at the original that was advertised, and then we had this negotiated option. So option one is the negotiated, better option, the preferred option, and option two is in your report as the original that was advertised. And Jose can go more into this when he comes up, but we're looking at a longer lifecycle and an easier construction process for the option that we're looking at. On this preferred option, the cost is 3.3 million, and it's about 286 calendar days from for mobilization to substantial completion. The other options are a little longer and cost more, $4.4 million and 358 days. We also, based on the consider... On the input that we got, we looked at other considerations. Some of those other considerations included a new bridge, a culvert. We looked at the process to approach that, to speed it up if possible, to compare to what we were doing, which we also considered a design build. We got some outside input. We even had EXP look at the concept of a new bridge. We reached back out to Derm more than once. We reached back out to Derm on the design, on the permitting process as well. There are other options, and on their face, some of these other options would be less expensive for what is the structure. I like to call it the structure of the bridge, but not the impacts that would result from the 2060 flood level rise requirements. So, and those are somewhat unknown, because until you go through that process of getting a permit and doing some designs, you wouldn't know what those full costs are. But on its face, yes, the actual structure could be less, but it doesn't provide certainty. It's a lot, you know, it's a process that you would have to run through and spend some money on in order to get a determination. So we did look at those options. The one before you, we think, is the one that provides the greatest certainty, and the other one would take time to determine, you know, whether it's viable or not. One of the things that we did in looking at those options that would require a new bridge, right, we're doing a repair bridge, not a new bridge. That's why we're able to use the existing permit and also not trigger those 2060 requirements. We looked at a feasibility review that we have up here that I'm going to let Jose walk us through quickly, and it shows the impacts of raising the road if you were to do a new... In the most likely scenario, and the impacts that would be required if you were to do a new bridge. So with that, I would bring up Jose to talk about that, and any other questions you might have, we'll both be here to take.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jose Santiago, EXP US Services Consultant. I would like to also recognize two other consultants that are online right now. I have Carmen Borja, who is a bridge expert, and also Jason Vida, who actually helped us prepare this report and prepare this alignment. So what we did was, we looked at two different scenarios that were presented before here at the commission. One was discussing, you know, perhaps raising the bridge elevation by one and a half feet or by six feet. The, you know, we looked at both scenarios. We looked at the design criteria. I don't want to get too technical, but we did look at things like design speed and approach slopes and the elevations that we needed to be able to go a foot and a half and then touch down on both sides of the property, both sides of the bridge, next to adjacent properties. And what we found was that for the first scenario where we raised the bridge a foot and a half, we were going to impact a total of five properties. In the handout, and let me see if we have the graphics here. In this scenario here, which is the foot and a half scenario, one property would have both driveways impacted, which is the property shaded in red, and then four other properties that are highlighted in yellow would be partially affected or would have one driveway, at least one driveway impacted. They would lose the ability to use one driveway. Now, obviously, if we're going to impact these driveways, we're going to attempt to harmonize the driveways. Let's say if we wanted to move forward with a foot and a half scenario, we would have to come back, we would be obligated to harmonize or to cure these driveways. And so that into itself is a process. If the owners are amenable to it, we're just making a hypothetical scenario right now, assuming that the owners would be okay with having one or both of their driveways impacted. So that was the first scenario that we looked at. And then the next scenario that we looked at was actually raising the bridge by six feet, and I believe this was a request based upon having a kayaker go under the bridge, having him be able to go under the bridge. Just to go back, the foot and a half is based on the sea level rise criteria. So the foot and a half is based on raising the bridge to meet sea level rise criteria. The six foot is to accommodate kayakers. And in this case, we would have five properties that would lose both driveways. We would have to cure both driveways.
Sorry, what does that mean exactly? Because when you say cure both driveways, they lose their existing access?
They would lose it.
So we have to provide it elsewhere?
We would have to...
Or are we changing the grade of their property?
We would be changing the grades on their property.
Okay.
If they were amenable to it. That's, I mean, assuming...
Obviously, we can't do any work on their property without their authorization, but...
Correct.
I would imagine they wouldn't want to be living on a property with no access to roadway.
Correct. Correct.
Was that your question, Commissioner? If that you recognize.
And what does that exactly mean? Because while we can have a conversation of it affects their driveways, what does that really mean?
What it really means, that's a great question. What it really means is that, let's say if you're the homeowner, and you're sitting in your living room, and you're looking out at your driveway, you've now got an approach that's X number of feet, and we can go back to the original diagram, I can tell you exactly how many feet above where it was before, and so you've literally got a wall now in front of you.
Think of a highway berm in your front yard.
Yeah, of course.
The best thing to...
Which is awful, but like how, then what, they drive down into your house?
Yes. We'd have to harm... They'd have to basically create ingress and egress through their property and account for the change of grade.
That is correct.
So then all of these houses would have...
These are the homes that are affected.
Most likely subsequent flooding because of that water.
Correct. We would have to also address drainage.
Drainage, yes. Yeah.
Well, that doesn't make any sense.
So again, we used criteria, slope, the current, you know, slope criteria for bridges. We followed, we followed the, you know, the standard criteria, and what we found also, just to give you an idea, to accommodate a bridge elevation of six feet, our project would be extended 400 feet. So we'd have 400 feet of roadway to accommodate that slope that's going up, and then it's coming down. So it would, the project would also be extended greatly to satisfy those grades that are required to go up and down on the roadway. So that's, that's basically the impacts that we have. Just to give you an idea, we also created another graphic here, what I just spoke about. This is what the grade would look like if you raised a foot, if you raised a bridge a foot and a half, your grade would be elevated by that green-blue sketch up there. And if you raised your bridge by six feet, then that's the wall that I was talking about that the homeowner would see. And then we just put a six-foot man, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, next to that red line there, just to give you an idea of how high that elevation would be.
And again, this is in a non-replacement scenario.
In a non-replacement scenario.
Okay.
Right. And that's, that's pretty much it. You know, we looked at profiles. We could have gotten further, but we would require a feasibility study, and we could tell you exactly what the impacts are. But from my experience, having worked on many F-dot projects over the years, the curing process or the business, or the property damages process is just as painful as the construction process. We would have to add another two years. Let's say if we decided to go forward with this, which obviously, we're not contemplating it, but we would have to add another two years just to address all the property damages and then construct.
Can I ask a question related to that, Madam Attorney? Are we potentially subject to an inverse condemnation claim, condemnation claim here? Sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm just...
Possibly, yes, Mayor. If it affects their access particularly...
Okay.
And we are not able to harmonize, there could be a potential...
Harmonizing it to their satisfaction or harmonizing it to a standard? What's the, what's the cure? Probably just the standard?
Probably to a mutual satisfaction, I would think.
Okay. So either way, we could be looking at a lawsuit?
Yes.
Okay. No, I, yeah, if it's, yeah, it's, yes, it could be five. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Are we done with the presentation?
Yes.
Colleagues, questions on any of the slides? Any slides you want to see again? No?
Any slides?
Any slides you want to see again or have questions about? Okay. Questions, comments?
Okay.
You're recognized.
So I've been, I've been, you know, really trying to work on figuring out the economics of the bridge and doing some research and understanding of other bridges that have been constructed, just like we see, you know, an F-dot standards or standards for bridges on construction numbers. And so when we, I reached out to some other people and brought them to the city just so we can have conversations, the numbers for a new bridge could significantly be a lot less expensive. Obviously, we have not got to the point where we would have a bridge designed to have a certain 100% accuracy on what a new bridge design or new bridge would look like. So obviously, we can't talk about that, but the understanding of pricing could be significantly less expensive. What the consequences are, are more time, right? So that's something that if the commission is non-negotiable on time, but we're able to save potentially money, is it a feasible understanding to move forward with that, right? So bridges, most of the people that we spoke to, or I spoke to, all say that a new bridge is probably the best scenario there, not a replacement.
When you say...
A new replacement.
Can you say who you spoke to?
Yeah, I spoke to BCC Engineering.
Okay.
And I spoke to another firm, but not as in detail as I did with BCC. So that's the only way that it'd be significantly less expensive. So in the caveat of trying to save money and doing something new that has the same lifespan, right? I mean, it'll probably still have the same 75, 80-year lifespan. The other consequences are, you know, one of the things I wanted to look into, which they did, right, was if we needed to raise it, maybe not paddleboard level, kayaking, you can still kayak under there now, right? So raising it 18 inches, if you change the geometry on the bridge, it could be feasible as well without having so much of an impact on harmonization, is what my understanding was as well. But that, again, that's all not, we don't know an accurate number, we're not 100% accurate on what that could be. So what the determination of my colleagues is, have an option just to replace it, which is currently at 3.3 million dollars, or, in my opinion, have a feasibility design with a new geometry and a new bridge at what I am expecting to be a significant cost decrease. Those are the two options that, in my opinion, we should look at.
Okay, so if you can repeat them one more time?
Which part?
The two options that you see.
Well, the option is the one that we're doing now.
Which is the replacement?
The replacement.
Okay.
And the other option would be to move forward on a study or a design, a preliminary study, so we can get a more accurate...
So PDNE, is that what we would need to do? A PDNE on a bridge replacement?
Bridge replacement.
PDNE is generally used as a study when trying to acquire federal funds. In this case, you would need, it would be a study, it would be a feasibility study.
But essentially, it's the same thing. We're just trying to determine the feasibility of...
Yeah.
Of whether a new, the new feasibility and cost of where the new bridge...
Yeah.
And what a new bridge entails.
Essentially the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, let me stop before I have comments and questions. Do you have any comments or questions? Sure, go ahead.
I mean, I commend Commissioner Kaye for what he's trying to do. I mean, it would be great to have a new bridge that would make our waterways more transient.
This wouldn't make it that much transient, it'd be just a new bridge.
Okay. To me, and I'd be much more open to feasibility and continuing this going on and on, but this bridge has been, if the bridge were open, normal, but it's not. It's closed, and you have a lot of residents in that area. I particularly know the one house that gets affected, and no matter what scenario, and he just wants something done. If it were my house, that's going to be a huge impediment for, so where it might be saving costs on the bridge, we're going to accrue costs on, you know, fixing up all these properties?
No, we don't know that yet.
I mean, they did the study.
No, that was the current bridge, increasing at 18 inches and then six feet.
Right.
This is not...
But that's practically a new bridge, no?
So the, we looked at two alignments. One was based on sea level rise criteria, which will be required with a new bridge. A new bridge...
Will require you to build it a foot and a half higher?
A foot and a half, yes.
Okay.
That's, that's going to be a given. And we went through that process right now with the Manor Lane Culvert. The Manor Lane Culvert, we went head-to-head with Durham for almost a year because they came back and they asked us for a repair to give, to provide sea level rise criteria and actually include that along the adjacent properties of the culvert. We won the battle because we said this is an emergency repair. Every project, new project that's going through Durham now has to meet sea level rise criteria. That is, that is, you know, their requirements right now.
So at minimum, we get a foot and a half of increase and the adjacent externalities? I mean, that's whether, whether it's a new bridge or a replacement bridge in a non-emergency scenario.
Correct.
You're at a foot and a half higher and you've got to account for the impacts to the adjoining properties because of the grade change.
Correct. Because this is an emergency repair and it's...
Again, so the non-emergency, the grade change requires you to basically extend the approach to achieve the grade that's required?
That is correct.
To get the extra foot and a half of elevation, is that correct?
Yes.
Mayor.
Okay.
Let me just...
Last second.
No, because it's based on that real quick.
Go ahead, I'm going to recognize your answers.
That is based on apples to apples on the same bridge if it's a replacement bridge. The idea, the thought process is with a new bridge that the geometry would change. It would swallow up the 18 inches and it won't have as much consequences or harmonization.
How does that happen?
The geometry of the bridge, I'm not, I'm not the structural...
No, so I...
But we would, that's something that we, we would need to find detail on.
Okay, so that's the part, I mean, beyond the time, which is not an inconsequential factor. Because we've been, the bridge has been effectively at 50% capacity for two years since Chip and I walked it very early on in his tenure here and led to this fantastic discovery. And it's just been closed, it's been effectively, service reduction over two years.
At least, I just wanted to clarify. I know Alex said October 23, which was when the first required bridge inspection was conducted by FDOT. By the time FDOT got to the bridge, it was already closed. It appears that, and I remember...
No, we, it was, we, so I walked this bridge, as many of us I'm sure did during our campaigns. And I, you know, I don't know if it was at ours or somebody else's. And the bridge seemed to be in pretty deplorable shape. At the very least, it needed to be painted. So, you know, we rode out there with, with John and the team to look at it. And when we could identify whether we owned it, we put a call in the FDOT. And that's when we came out, they did a preliminary inspection, said, "You own it, we think." They weren't sure. And oh, by the way, it looks like it's structurally deficient. So the immediate direction was close, close a lane down to limit access. So, yeah, I would imagine this happened in April, thereabouts of, because you, when did you start again, February?
January, January 23.
So somewhere in that first quarter timeframe is when this conversation happened.
Right.
So we probably got the, we finally got official, official confirmation in October.
Right. And then subsequent to that, there was another bridge inspection conducted in April of this year. And it shows that the deterioration has continued. It's continuing to deteriorate. So I just want to put that on the record.
Commissioner Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just want to finish up by, you know, in addition to the, to the, to the new information that now it's a lifespan of 75 years, you know, and speaking with the manager, there's ways to beautify signage and make the bridge look nicer. We already have a permit. If we're going for a new design and you're like, I mean, we're looking at just possibly, what, three years? Total four years?
Between the permitting and the coordination with the property owners?
And construction and everything, four years.
At least three years.
Guys, I mean, I think we, we have a responsibility to get this bridge done for our residents. And the best way forward, in my opinion, is let's repair it. It gets 75 years, we beautify it as much as possible and get the bridge open, you know, as soon as possible. And that's the way that I'm in favor of voting for this one.
Do you have any comments, yes, go ahead.
So, am I correct in believing that option two is not on the table for any of us?
Option two, the six-foot elevation?
I just, I just want to make sure that we are...
So under this scenario, for me, it's definitely not on the table. I don't know that, I think Commissioner Kai is holding out hope that a PDNE study would show that, or PD, whatever, preliminary engineering study would show...
Nobody knows what that means except for you and him, don't worry.
It's something that traffic engineers make a lot of money doing, pursuing projects and never get built, in my experience here in the county generally. So no offense to the traffic engineers who do a good job with the studies, we just never build them. So, you know, it's basically determine how to, how to solve for the problem and what it's going to cost, what are magnitude? That's what the study will tell you. I think he's, what I'm, what I'm struggling to understand, because my experience with my colleague is a very logical person, being an engineer and an entrepreneur. And I just don't see how we, in this conversation that you've had with BCC, how we solve for, in my mind, with any bridge, the bigger it gets, the taller it gets, the more the approach has to grow to kind of preserve the grades that the regulatory authorities require. And so with any elevation of the bridge, it's going to impact more property. I mean, this is the same conversation when I was a 26-year-old, wet behind the ears idiot working for a mayor at the state of Miami, we had around the Brickell Bridge, right? Which is, we all wanted to raise it another five, six, seven, eight, 10 feet so we could limit the number of openings, particularly when you had luxury pleasure craft that had arguably zero commercial value as opposed to the maritime traffic. And the, and the problem was all the budding real estate was expensive then. Imagine what it costs now. So the, you know, the height of the bridge was left, it was raised a little bit, but not nearly as much as everybody else wanted. And we abandoned the idea of the Johnny Witten Tunnel that we used to call about. It was a commission that was proposing, you know, cutting a tunnel underneath that span of water because it would eliminate the need for the bridge altogether. So those are the kind of options I think you're trying to explore. I just don't know how we reconcile the external impact. I think to Commissioner Rodriguez's point, we could be saving a lot of money on the bridge, but spending a lot of money buying what have become very expensive homes adjacent to it. So we buy, in this case, in one scenario, $7 or $8 million of cost because some people may be unhappy with their homes and say, you know what? I don't, I don't like it. You basically took it from me. And we end up in litigation over what we owe them by way of compensation or whether we end up buying their home, which is probably more likely than not what would end up happening because we'd be buying probably half the value in a lot of cases. So that's the part I'm struggling with because I, I understand what you're trying to do. But I, so I want to give you one last opportunity to maybe convince me to...
Wait, but you're not finished?
Oh, I'm sorry, you were finished.
I just, I asked you guys a question.
Sorry. Let me recognize Commissioner Rodriguez again, go ahead.
Okay, so then is that, I'm just trying to gauge this here. None of us are open to a six-foot bridge there. Okay, so that being the case, in a perfect world, what would we even imagine we would be saving with another, with like doing this all over again?
A new bridge?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you're recognized.
So the, there's what we, what I've heard as a manner, a manner of magnitude for pricing, historically in the bridges that they do throughout Miami-Dade County, it's anywhere between $600 and $700 per linear foot, right? Right now, we're currently at roughly, what, $1,100, $1,200, $1,300? I don't remember what the actual price per square foot is right now, but it's pretty high.
So is this like the, the building Dante Facel supersized me?
Correct, right? So, but we don't know all the different aspects of that as well yet, but we're getting there. So that, that's what my, what I've been told, right? So that's the order of magnitude difference there. To answer the mayor's question on geometry. So imagine that we currently have a surface and the structure is already in place, right? And it's, let's say, two feet deep, just a, just a suggestion. My understanding from a new geometry is that if you do something new, you don't need to have all that geometry of two feet wide as a bridge might be right now with all that concrete. You can create a new bridge with the geometry being a foot, right? I'm being, I don't know the...
Okay, so the bridge design saves you a foot of elevation?
Saves you an elevation.
Okay.
The one foot automatically moves to 1.5 because of the...
No, but that's apples and apples, right?
No, 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 no. So any, any new bridge design, Durham is going to require you to raise it...
Yeah, but you're not understanding what I'm saying. So if the bridge currently is this, it's three feet thick, right? And the new geometry of a new bridge is only 18 inches. That's where you gather the 18 inches of waterway system so it clears that.
Correct, but when you're going for permitting for that new structure, they're going to enforce the new code.
Yeah, you get the code.
What he's saying is the bed of the, I'm sorry, the, the road bed, rather than being three feet, is 18 inches thick.
Right.
And so that provides for the differential in terms of the SLR?
Clearance.
Clearance, okay.
Right.
Okay.
I saw, I understand what Commissioner Kai is saying. And actually, in working, collaborating with the bridge contractor that, that worked, you know, that we, we had with us and, and the design firm, we actually came up with the most shallow beams available. In other words, in order to maximize clearance, because that was one of the things that had been discussed here in the commission, that it was the desire of the commission to have as much clearance as possible. They came back with what they call a 12, a 12-inch FSB system under the deck. They, they basically optimized the deck and the bridges to the, to the maximum possible. How they're going to save another foot and a half?
So what did you save when you did that platform?
What did we save?
Yeah.
In terms of...
Cost, height.
We didn't because we added a new deck.
Is this part of the repair scenario?
Yes.
So we're already getting the, the height?
Yeah.
We're, we're getting that height in the repair?
Yes.
And what, again, in terms of, Commissioner Kai, in terms of the duration or lifespan of the new bridge?
Be the same.
It'd be the same, so it's 75 years and 75 years, okay?
Four years to, let's put timeline in there.
What I've been told is not four years.
Well, I'm saying permitting to, through construction, complete, entire view.
What I've been told is Delta would be six months to a year, the difference between doing the new permit. This is what I've been told.
Okay, but there's, but there's no guarantee even, okay. So you're saying that what they're telling you is there's no externalities created by, by, by replacement of the new bridge because of the system they would use to kind of keep, to meet the SLR?
You mean harmonization issues there?
Yes, correct.
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
There could be.
Okay.
That's a risk.
Okay.
No, I'm not saying that.
So look, I think, I think the, I mean, I think the most obvious course for me is, unfortunately, I mean, I'd love to, I'd love to visit this issue, but we've been at, we've been waiting for a path forward for two years. And so, I mean, I would like to see improvements on this break ground before I have to knock on doors again next November, quite honestly. Because I'd hate to knock on these doors again and be exactly in the place that we are right now without a clear solution, only to find out that we still may be buying non-insignificant liability on, on a replacement scenario. So my, my, my vote would be to kind of go forward with the, the in-place replacement strategy that we've, that we have vetted very thoroughly and we know is going to have no impact on the surrounding neighbors. Yes, ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
No, it's just, I asked something...
You're unusually quiet.
But because I ask a question, it sets everybody off answering.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, is, is this $3 million, whatever dollars currently in our budget?
No.
No, I know that the silent, no.
We, we had, if you remember during the budget period, that we had assembled a package, certain projects that we would borrow for. And I forget what the other projects were, but we had put that into that list of projects.
It was, it was, it was the bridge and the culvert that we had put into that. We had eventually ended up with that package.
Yeah, infrastructure, yeah.
So, so we had the bridge and the culverts. Now we've added the park, the possibility of the one-on-80th and US1 Manor Lane.
Yes.
So it's bridges, culverts, Manor Lane. Did we have an estimate or an idea of what we thought this was going to cost?
On the bridge?
Yeah.
We, we slotted three, the, the, the 3.4 million in the, in that list. And on the culvert, remember, it's the delta between the money that we received from the state and, and, and what we would have out of pocket. The combination of those projects was $5 million, 5.1.
For both of them?
For two culverts and the bridge was roughly 5.1. That's what I remember.
Coming from us?
That we would borrow for, yeah.
Exactly, so we would borrow 5.1. And if we add Manor, Manor Lane to that, we're at 6 something?
6.6, assuming we, assuming we borrowed the whole thing. You are, yeah. Hold on, I gotta, I gotta...
Well, I'm, I'm answering her.
You have a question for her?
No, I have, yeah, kind of like a comment, question.
A colloquy.
A dialogue.
Would you like me to recognize your colleague here in a colloquy?
Hallelujah, of course.
Okay.
Remember, we have already in the CIP already the, the 3.5 million allocated for the Dante Facel building. So this money can be used currently for the bridge. And later, if we decide to go forward with that project, then Alfredo can review and go forward with financing ideas.
That 3. something from Dante Facel is the most elastic piece of...
No, I think, I thought we, I thought we had decided that we didn't want to borrow for that building, which is why it got moved out of the debt service bucket into the cash bucket. And the things that we had discussed borrowing because they had such a long life cycle, was for the bridges because, you know, we would finance them for 30 years, but they have a life cycle that's two and a half times the, the term of the debt. I mean, am I wrong, Madam Commissioner?
You what?
Am I wrong in recalling?
And you're recalling correctly. The only reason that I say that Dante Facel...
It's elastic is...
Because the last time we had a conversation about something, we said, oh, we'll use that money and then borrow here and move it back. And I don't know that that will work. So yes, you are correct.
Okay.
In saying we moved it from the borrow bucket to the cash bucket.
Correct.
And it's kind of just sitting there.
Sitting there, waiting for us to resolve the other issues.
Exactly. So I, I just, I caution us on maybe leaving this for later because I worry that we inadvertently will continue to add small things here and there and the $5 or $6 million will quickly become $10 million.
Yeah, cost escalation is real.
Yep.
So again, I'm, I'm assuming you are endorsing the original option?
Yeah, because the other options to me don't really, well, the six-foot one, you'd have to...
Neither SLR or six feet nor a possible option that Commissioner Kai is proposing, which is a new bridge?
Well, I, I think the new bridge, we just keep kicking the can.
Hand, okay, okay, thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez, further comments, are you good? Sir, you want to close this out? Okay, so I think the direction is to proceed with the, with a replacement bridge, okay? Thank you. Yes, I have, if you can read item five in the record, please.
Item five, a restitution of the Maryland City Commission of the City of South Florida holding their first public, public meeting required under section 255.065 3C Florida statutes in connection with an unsolicited proposal from Somi Padell Center LLC for Padell Center on the rooftop of the City of South Miami Municipal Parking Garage, authorizing and directing the city manager to proceed with, with the proposal without a public bidding process and proceed with the public interest review for further findings by the city commission.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, would you want to give us a quick overview? And then we'll decide whether we want a full presentation or...
Yes, sir.
Or want to proceed?
As you remember, there was a prior discussion on two concepts to possibly activate the rooftop of the garage, soccer and, and the Padell project. I have reviewed and with staff, reviewed both of those opportunities. Obviously, both are, I think, worthy of consideration. I, I think the Padell project just has a certain dynamic that brings something that we don't offer in this community, an activation that, that I think would also bring some numbers that, that would also benefit, I think, not only parking, but the business in the surrounding area. So the item before you is, is a consideration, a resolution of holding our first public meeting as following the state statute 255.065. As a result of that unsolicited proposal, as you know, we, we have that ability within our code as well to consider unsolicited proposals and, and proceed without bidding, if you will. But we are leveraging the state statute in this case that would allow such a project that, that would facilitate the development of a, of a public project. And it's got to be a qualifying project. This proposal from Somi Padell Center LLC, which is subsidiary of Van Vega Ventures and, and principles are here, would be five Padell courts on the rooftop of the garage with a fabric cover for a portion of it. Again, it would be for, for public use. And so this item is, is the first step of that process. And it, it puts a burden on me to determine whether the proposal is in compliance with the minimum requirements of the state statute. And, and in doing so, this item determines that, that those requirements have been met. The proposal is, is in your packet. And you see sort of, you know, the project team, the, how it would be deployed, the financials... the financials, three different avenues. We had a conversation, I think they're probably in interest more in considering the straight lease, uh, option, instead of considering a per- a percentage of revenue. So this is the first step, the second step of this process, if the commission, uh, considers, uh, authorizing us to continue down this path, would be to continue working on this proposal. That would be a design, build, finance, and operate this facility, and we would have a second meeting, duly noticed meeting, that, that at that time would, would be the public, public, uh, interest review, and further determination of, of an agreement with, with the, this entity, uh, for your consideration. Structurally, you know, it would, they, they are estimating eight to ten weeks, if, if, you know, once we say go, to construct, uh, the facilities, uh, on the garage. There'll be some things we're gonna have to review from a structural standpoint, make sure that that, um, you know, uh, is acceptable to our building official. And there's a few other elements of the state statute that we would have to satisfy, uh, along this process. But again, this is the first step in considering this unsolicited proposal. So I'm bringing this as the option, uh, after considering both the soccer option and the Padal option. And certainly, they're here to, to share more information, and our parks director is here to answer any questions that you may have. And certainly, that's an overview, and, and would, would turn it over to you for your discussion. The financials are, are attached, potentially, you know, there's some more conversations to be had if, if this commission deemed so, and directions to continue. And you see the different models as it relates to straight lease payments, or a lease payment and participation, uh, in, in revenue. As well, I mentioned, parking revenue that would be enhanced by the participants attending, uh, this facility. And certainly happy to answer any more questions, or do a deeper dive in certain aspects that you may want, and/or if you wanna hear from the proposer, uh, uh, again, which are here.
Colleagues, uh, do we want to hear a full presentation? We're gonna hear it at the next meeting as well, are we not? Madam City Attorney, procedurally?
You can, Mayor, at the next meeting as well.
We do need to have a public hearing this evening, correct?
Yes, it's public comment, not a hearing.
Okay, so, um, colleagues, you want a full presentation from the respondent, or do we want to save that for the next meeting, and just address any comments or questions to the manager with respect to what we may wanna see in the next, in the next step? Okay, so let's do that, no offense to the present company here. Okay, uh, why don't I open up the public hearing first, and then we can have a discussion about what we may wanna see come back to us at the next public hearing? All right? Okay, does anybody on the public who'd like to address this commission on item five on tonight's agenda, which is, uh, an unsolicited proposal received to authorize the construction of a paddle court facility, five paddle courts on the rooftop of our par- public parking garage in the Somi District? Please come forward at this time. If there's any member, uh, online who'd like to address this commission at this time, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one online and no one in the chamber, we will close the public hearing. Why don't I go left to right, and Commissioner Bonich, why don't you kick us off?
Thank you. I just caution everyone, 'cause sometimes it says six courts, and sometimes it says five in the paperwork.
It's five.
I imagine it's five, 'cause that's what's in the drawing, but you might wanna update that moving forward.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
My only question is, is there gonna, um, is there gonna be, I guess, alcohol sold in the conven- in the convenience store? Or is, is that a possibility? Do you know, if you, are you aware of this? Do I have to ask?
Yeah, uh, there's something we haven't really, like, gotten into that level of detail, so I don't know if there's an aspiration on that. Obviously, we would have to look and see, you know, anything that would preclude that ability, uh, but we haven't really gotten into that yet. They may, they may explain that they have an interest or not, I don't know.
Jeffrey Garcia. Commissioner, uh, we had not gotten into that, into that level of detail, uh, but that is something that, uh, you know, beer and wine, uh, capacity is something we would be interested in exploring.
Okay.
We've talked about it amongst ourselves, but we even amongst ourselves haven't gotten to that level of detail.
Okay.
We originally, what we discussed publicly, if you remember, was, uh, some kind of live refreshments, whether it's a juice, or whether it's a, you know, an energy drink, or something of that nature. We would be interested, though, in having a discussion about, uh, a beer and wine. It's not a deal breaker for any, you know, in one way or the other. It's just something that seems like it'd be interesting and a nice amenity.
The, the only reason I bring it up, I mean, at smoothies, all that, I, I haven't, it's just, I'm also looking out for our current businesses that are there too, you know, and let's all share from, uh, let's all share the wealth of, of the people.
And we've gone through the neighborhood and talked to, we've got Villas and some of the others.
Okay.
And we wanna be complimentary, we wanna work together, and, you know, we've even talked to them, and, you know, exploring the legality if they could come up and host a happy hour, you know, some, something interesting for local businesses.
That's the reason I bring it up, is just, you know, uh, cohesive with the current businesses that are, are there now.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kaye, any thoughts?
Yeah. In respect to bathrooms, what, what's the solution for restrooms up there?
So, uh, what we have, uh, looked into, and, and I, and I think you addressed it briefly at, at, whenever it was, a month ago or so, bringing in, if you've been to Paddle X, uh, or one of the others downtown, uh, they actually have those modular bathrooms. Don't think porta-potties, think really kind of nice, higher-end modular bathrooms. And the way that they're even decorated and masqueraded, they look like permanent bathrooms, the ones at Paddle X. And, you know, they come on the back of a trailer, and, and, you know, this is kind of what we've been exploring thus far.
I feel like the city has one available that's coming up that we can go ahead and rent to you.
We get it for our own events.
Yeah.
Just, uh, uh, on, on that point, 'cause this is, uh, in my, in my day-to-day work, this is a real issue with the county interim and WAZ review of these uses, so do we have the equivalent of a temporary events permit status in our code? Because even, so the ca- city of Miami, for example, has temporary use permits that they authorize?
I know, the Wharf was open under one for, uh?
It was, but they all, but those require, but those were, tho- those require even modular units to be connected to sewer. And so, you know, we, we, you know, just again, as we think about how we execute this, that's a real consideration. I mean, obviously, the property is serviced by sewer, since we've got ground floor retail tenants there. But just thinking about, that may be an improvement that you have to underwrite if it's, depending on how the county
Yeah.
treats the review.
And there, there is sewer up there.
I don't know if it, I, I don't know if there is or not up there.
I think through the drainage, isn't there?
I don't know, so again, I just highlight that as an issue.
No?
Depending on how we treat it, you also, again, just, you know, caution to the, caution to the enthusiastic, including us, depending on how, if it's, if it's in the temporary use versus the temporary event category, you've gotta pay road impact fees, or whatever they're called, it's mobility fees
Mm-hmm.
to the county for the use. So, um, just a couple items to, to, to be concerned about as we structure the arrangement. Commissioner Kaye, any further, any further questions on your part?
Oh, good, thank you.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Rodriguez, you recognize again?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes.
I do remember. Is there a commitment from a revenue perspective on, um, if you hit certain numbers?
The offer here, the offer here is, if there are three scenarios. One is a, um, straight eighteen thousand dollar a month with a two percent increase annually, or there are reduced base payments with revenue share. I, I actually would like us to consider countering with the higher of the base payment as represented here, or fifteen percent of the total revenue as kind of the payment, whichever is higher, yeah.
Okay.
Right, the reason being, I mean, I'm just looking at how these agreements typically, the kind of the industry average, is about twelve and a half to sixteen percent of gross is what you are typically paid as compensation on a lease like this, or a lease like a license agreement. So, again, I would suggest, rather than a revenue split, I, I like the surety of the consistent cash, but would want to true up in the event, you know, let's assume we authorize a whole bunch of activations, and you do extraordinarily well, we wanna share on the upside with you as well.
We're not opposed to that, and, and, you know, it could be, we can hammer out the actual details of it, but we're not opposed to that.
Okay.
That's where I was going with it.
Okay.
That, that's not the airport.
Yeah. Yeah, you recognize her.
So you would have to crane, I guess, that, that's a great question, by the way, about the bathrooms, I didn't even think about that. You would have to crane it up there?
It can be driven up on a trailer.
Okay, good point, fine.
Does it have the headway clearance to do that?
Yeah. But then how do you, how do you clean it? Because the courts will be in at that point.
That's, that's, that, we have not gotten that far.
Yeah. That, 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 I just, I mean?
Crane it back down.
I, um, no, just from being on construction sites all the time, that's, that's gonna be, uh?
Yeah.
You must be a contractor, Danny.
And you know, Danny, uh, of course, sorry, Commissioner, uh, it could be closer towards the, you know, the, the?
Yeah, that, the?
The east side of the?
The east, northeast?
And then it would be more accessible.
Okay.
But we have not gotten to that.
You might wanna consider, and the height of that truck, those trucks are big?
Yeah.
So if you ha- you may, you might not have clearance?
Cleaning trucks, yeah.
Yeah, so just bring that.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta deal with poop, so we'll figure that out. Okay, anything else we wanna throw out there by way of comments? Okay. Madam City Attorney, what action must we take? Do we need to have affirmative motion?
Yeah, first, I wanted to clarify for the record that the full proposal is included with this agenda item and available to the public, should they wish to review it. Today, this is actually just confirming that this is the first public meeting required by the P three statute. You're authorizing the manager to proceed with evaluating this proposal without competitive bidding, and also authorizing him to come back with the public interest determination, that'll be the second public meeting, and further authorizing him to engage any consultants that are necessary in his review and evaluation of the proposal.
Okay, so that is, I will adopt that as a statement of the motion required, and move the item in that posture?
Essentially, it's the resolution title.
Okay, perfect. Is there a second on the resolution?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments? Any further direction? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaye?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
I don't pass this board through.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We look forward to coming back, and, and we're gonna clean up that typo, Commissioner, I promise you. We look forward to coming back and, and, and working out and figuring out.
Thank you for always dressing to the nines.
Well, I'm happy.
Good to see you.
Nice, nice shirt.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, I knew you would always have my time.
Okay, uh, we've got, um, let's move to item M four and, uh, the corresponding, um, first reading of the moratorium, which is item six. If you could read M four and item six, please.
M four, proposed ordinance regarding sustainable design. And item six, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of South Florida, retroactively extending the previous moratorium of the enforcement of the sec- of section twenty-dash-three-point-six-W of the city's land development code relating to residential requirements for solar photovoltaic systems, attack systems.
Mr. Manager, Ms. Cabrera making the presentation? Okay. Ms. Cabrera, whenever you're ready, good evening.
Good evening, San Francisco Development Services Director, uh, we're just bringing this back, 'cause it had expired, and we need the moratorium extended until we finalize the replacement ordinance, which is that sustainability, uh, building ordinance that is up for discussion.
Okay, so let's take, is there, um, any discussion on item six? Okay, can I get a motion on item six?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner, uh, Bonich, and a second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll on item six?
Yes, Commissioner Kaye? Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
I don't pass this board through.
Ms. Cabrera, we're gonna recognize you on M four, just to piggyback on the ordinance, so. If you could walk us through your memo and your recommendation?
For the, uh, sustainable?
Yes, ma'am, just to kind of piggyback on the same discussion.
So, um, we tried to move from being mandated, uh, to build more sustainably, or just, really, what we have now is just, you have to put solar panels, there's no consideration as to building efficiently, how you cite the property, or anything like that, having operable windows or anything. So we looked at this and came up with something that, um, took from a few different cities, but basically, it's a, a point system. And if developers or homeowners decide to build a home that has certain, there's like a, I think there's like twelve different items, but it's how you cite the property, the deep overhangs, um, maintaining certain trees on the lot, these types of things. If you incorporate these things, uh, reclaim water, all that, if you incorporate these, there's a point system. And depending on how many of these items you meet, you get a discount on your permit fees. So I think the discounts go, range from fifteen to thirty-five percent. And basically, um, for like a eight hundred thousand dollar home, the permit fees now would be about sixteen thou- I think, no, twelve thousand dollars in the new permit fee structure. So the savings is, you know, a few thousand dollars. It won't make up for the cost maybe of, if it's more expensive to build, but really, I mean, this is something that we're trying to, convince people that it's the right thing to do, uh, it's gonna save them on their energy bill, it's a sustainable way of building. You know, we really need to take care of our environment, and just putting trees in the right way really isn't enough. Will we come in and just clear these private lots and put these glass boxes that are really not energy efficient, and then just dump a solar panel on the top? So this is really a completely different direction. I think it's the right direction, I think, um, you know, people in the market are looking, are more aware nowadays that we need to be very conscious of how we build, and that there's a better way of building, and you do need, you do need to build with consideration of the climate and location where you're building. So that's what's in front of you. Uh, I think most of you have gone through it with me. We also went to a green task force, you heard, uh, Mayor speaking about his comments. Uh, I was gonna address his comments, basically, he has some issues with?
Can we, can we get copies of them? 'Cause I don't, it was not in the package, correct?
No, it was not in the package.
Okay, if we can, for, when the item comes back for bone presentation, if you can, again, run the ordinance by them, and then bring us back the comments, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I was just gonna briefly say, mostly, it's, um, he, he has concerns with mold and mildew with some of the items that I have on there, which is like having operable windows, or things of that nature, because of the high humidity in South Florida. But, uh, you know, nineteen twenties homes are not sealed tight, and they probably have less mold than any home that you build nowadays. So I'm not, I mean, I haven't gone back to him, I was gonna go back to him and ask him if he had any research on that, 'cause I haven't been able to find any, uh, or if that's just personal preference, but I, I think that, um, you know, having operable windows, to be able to open your windows on days in December, January, is actually a very good thing. It's, from all the research I've done, it's actually, um, you know, helps with the cross ventilation, it's actually healthier. You get more outside air, I mean, it's just, I haven't found anything that says that that's not a good thing to do.
I- isn't it by code, don't you have to have an operable window for, by Egress window?
So you need to have a means of Egress, but means of Egress is very small, so most of these modern homes that you see, the big windows, they're
Fixed.
solid panes, they're not operable.
Typically, like, but not in the bedrooms, that's typically more living room?
You only have to have one Egress window in the bedrooms.
Okay.
And, yeah, so these very big windows are usually not operable.
Okay.
In most of the construction that we see nowadays. There's also the deep overhangs, the front porches, all that is gone. From what we see in the style of homes that are being built, that's not really very common anymore, even though it's really the appropriate style of construction and, and design for Florida. He was also concerned with the, um, reclaiming the rainwater and, um, with mosquitoes, and how that could become a mosquito nuisance, I believe he said there was an issue in Key West with this. Again, these are things that it's like behavior, that people just need to do things correctly. You know, you give a gun to somebody who's gonna go out and shoot a whole bunch of people, or you give a gun to somebody who's gonna be responsible with it. So I feel the same way, it's like we shouldn't promote things that are, um, sustainable and headed in the right direction, because people just don't behave properly. So, um, and there was some other little things, but mostly those were his big concerns, and I'll make sure to include them when we come back for first reading.
Thank you. Comments? Here's one each.
Thank you. I'm thankful to you for bringing this, thank you very much, I know it's taken a lot of time and effort for you and your team, and I'm happy to see that we are approaching our residents who are grown adults, capable of making choices on their own every day, and allowing them to do that in their homes versus mandating what they need to do. I appreciate you doing all of this.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Sorry, I just have one more question, the, the retention tanks?
Mm-hmm.
Are you requiring them underground, or are you requiring them overground?
There's no requirement for it to be above or below ground.
Okay.
Wherever you want.
Be, well, okay, I mean, you, keep that in mind, um, if you have a five-foot setback, where are you gonna put the retention tank?
So, yeah, so I, I have a couple comments about that kind of detail.
Okay.
So, yeah, well, go ahead, yeah.
No, no, that, that's, I mean, we might, I know City of Miami Beach requires you to do it underground for that purposes, they're very tight lots. So you're, you're, you know, you're not gonna, are you gonna count it as part of the structure, and now it's in the, in, in, in the setback, or?
No, I, I see that almost the same way you would see, you know, not even an air conditioning unit.
The privacy wall that we talked about the other day.
Yeah, that makes noise or anything.
Yeah, but it's a big tank, and how, to, if you, again, if you have a five-foot setback, and you put one of these big tanks, you're taking up most of the space. So people are, they're gonna not, I, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that it's not gonna be in, do, like, they're not gonna wanna do it, because you're taking up half of their wa- uh, their, their, their side space, you know, their setback. So only houses with big setbacks, fifteen-foot setbacks, are gonna look into doing something like this, where they might want the discount, but I'm just saying, think about that.
So, um, I- So, um, I guess what you would like to see is that we say it could be below grade or above, whatever.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
Okay.
For these, again, these smaller homes, lots with setbacks, that wanna do this, but are like, I'm not gonna do it because I don't have the room.
Sure, do you guys, Commissioner Bonich has a question for you.
So, are you saying then that they don't have to take the setback into account? That that doesn't count?
They could put, they could put it in ground and then the setback is, it, it doesn't affect the setback.
Or we can, or we can basically make that something that's not counted as part of the setback. So, if you can, or let them use 80% of the setback, four feet of the five.
I, I agree.
They're not gonna wanna do that. Think about it.
I, I don't think anyone's gonna wanna do that. There's, I mean, there's portions of my setback on the west side of my house that are useless to me. I mean, really, other than it's a walking path. So, the more mechanical stuff I could stick there, the better, frankly. So, I, I could see, you know, depending on the lot condition, it could work. Um, but, but yes, I understand that it, for some, some cases, maybe to cumbersome and giving people options as to where they set it is absolutely appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not stipulated where it has to be above or below ground right now.
Commissioner Caya, do you have any thoughts?
No, I think it's me.
I, I, again, my intention personally, and maybe it's not the, the, not the position of the board, but my, I, I think we do need a mandate. I think we should set a standard, right? I think we should not have a single mandate, which is my biggest problem, which is, it's panels or nothing, right? I think there's a lot of ways to get to the same result because we've talked about this, right? Mandating panels and allowing people to build highly intense mechanical system-driven homes is not really advancing the goal of sustainability. So, I like to have a menu of options, but I think there needs to be a standard, whether it's a point total that we need to hit at a minimum, or above which you can get a discount on fees, et cetera, or, or preserving as an alternative, someone who just wants to do panels, right? But I think we do need to have a menu of minimums that we, that we mandate, not just, you know, an incentive-based structure, which quite frankly, the incentive we're offering is de minimis, right? On the cost of a typical home. You know, to give someone a $4,000 or, or $6,000, $7,000 discount on a home that's gonna cost them $3, $4 billion to build, I don't think it's that significant a cost center. Yes, ma'am?
Would you be willing to give them a better incentive?
Yeah, I would, I, I am. I think, I think, I think we have a minimum, but I think also when you hit a certain threshold, for example, if you wanna build a recess porch that's six feet deep, it shouldn't count towards your lot coverage.
Yeah, so we have something like that.
So, those are, I, I'm fine with giving people more and better, but I think we do need to set a minimum bar because otherwise, we're gonna get, you know, in many cases, a race to the bottom. I don't, I don't think the dollar incentive is strong enough, given the direction which we're seeing pricing on homes. It's not that strong, it's not, I don't think it's a strong enough market incentive to get us to where we wanna go.
So, then instead of mandating it, why wouldn't we give them better incentives? What you're talking about, maybe not money, maybe something else.
We have, just to, because I, I'm not sure it's clear, but there are other incentives. So, there is an incentive on if you maintain certain trees and they're within the footprint of a house that will work with you on the setbacks. If you have a green roof that you collect the rainwater, then we work with your previous area. So, if you have the, the wraparound porches or the deep porches, that it doesn't count against your lot.
My, my point is, I think to those things, if it translates to money, right? More sellable square footage for the builder, it's probably gonna be adopted, right? I don't think that just the private discount. And so, this is, I mean, this is just an outline, this is not really an ordinance yet. So, when we get the ordinance, we'll, we can have the conversation, but if we can't get to a strong suite of incentives, like what you're talking about, that translate into dollar value for the builder or the homeowner, um, I think we need to think about having, you know, a menu of minimum mandates.
What he means is make it really, really worth it because mandating people is terrible and we shouldn't do it.
Oh, that's what she said.
Well, I have them in there.
We mandate, we have mandates around, around, you know, minimums for, you know, uh, you know, we have a building code that requires minimums. So, this is really no different in that regard. We're just, we, it has an environmental nexus, not just a, a safety nexus around the structure, right? To sustain a windstorm event. So, you know, I don't see it any different than, than a building code minimum standard. I don't, I don't think it should be onerous. I don't think it should be prescriptive in only one way, which is my only, my main complaint about what's been the practice here before. You only have one option and one option is never a good option because it leads to distorted results. I think we're seeing that right now. And so, I would say, you know, either it's a very, very strong suite of incentives that we know builders are gonna take advantage of because they see economic value and benefit for themselves or an eventual occupant, or it's gotta be a mandate that, you know, kind of finds a middle ground and says, you can do any number of these things to get to what I think we all want, which is to reduce total, the total energy loads that homes are creating, right? Uh, on systems and by their external impact on the environment. So, that's my thinking. Again, we probably have a very, you know, probably have a wide range of opinions on this board as we should, but that's what I would like to see when we see the ordinance come back in a dress, either a very strong incentive suite, not just the permit fee reduction or, you know, alternate, alternate mandatory minimums.
What you have in front of you should have that, though.
I didn't, I didn't see it. I don't know, I don't know what the, what, all I see is permit fee discounts. Am I reading the wrong document?
In the individual, like, sections, it'll tell you, like, if you have the wraparound porch, it wouldn't count. Yeah, you gotta keep going. Those are definitions, I believe, at the beginning and the whereas clauses. But I understa, I know exactly what, what you're getting at, so I'll.
Yeah, it's not, this is not, I mean, again, I'm not sure if this is a draft of the ordinance because this is not in the form of an ordinance that I'm familiar with and I see these often. But I would imagine there's gotta be a section that's gonna walk through someone through what the calculations look like, right? So, if you do this, you get this by way of relief. I didn't see that spelled out here. Again, I thought this was a working draft of ideas, not really an ordinance. So, I think there's a lot of great ideas in here. I think there's a lot of good thinking in this. This is exactly what I want, which is incorporating more passive ways to meet the same goal. But, um, I just think we need to think about, you know, there's, there's a conversation about, you know, encouraging porches by adjusting FAR calculations. That's the idea, but what that means in practice is what I'm trying to understand, Strami.
I understand.
Okay? Further comments? Okay, so we look forward to seeing the ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on then. Where am I going next? Let's go to, um, M1. Yep. Madam Clerk, you wanna read it for the record or we'll recognize Commissioner Rodriguez?
Service on multiple boards.
Okay, do, do you wanna have the City Attorney review the legal posture that was in the, okay.
They wrote it.
Okay, great. So, Madam City Attorney, if you're recognized, to kind of explain the issue.
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez brought up this item and the issue was whether legally the same individual or person could serve on two boards in the city, particularly the Design Review Board and the Planning Board. So, the analysis is a constitutional analysis because the Florida Constitution prohibits a person from serving in two offices or two office board members, okay? What is an office? An office is deemed any position where that board has more than recommending powers and can make, can make final decisions on certain matters. Conclusion, the Design Review Board in some instances does have final decision-making authority. Many times, it's recommending, but in some instances, it has final decision-making authority. So, a position on that board is an, is an office under the Florida Constitution, okay? The Planning Board, however, under our charter was set up as purely an advisory or recommending body. So, members of the Planning Board only recommend to the commission and do not take final action. So, members of the Planning Board are not officers under the Florida Constitution. So, legally, a person could sit on both the Design Review Board, which is an office, and the Planning Board, which is not deemed an office. However, as we raise in the memo, there are some concerns potentially with sitting on two boards that overlap in this design review process or development approval process. And so, it's really the will of the commission. I think if you direct us, the amendment would be quite simple. It would prohibit one, the same individual from sitting on board, the Design Review Board and the Planning Board. And it would be a simple code amendment, and that's the direction.
I guess you recognize, sir.
So, and, and aside from, from the legality, I just think, you know, just pure common sense, you have he or she is reviewing something on the Design Review Board for then, two weeks later, for that same, he or she to review it again in the Planning Board. I just, it's, it's redundant. I think we should pick whichever board the person wants. I don't care, you know, Planning Board, Design Review Board, but let's give other people opportunities so we hear different ideas. Plus, it also adds that that one per, that person, he or she, has an additional influence because they get to hear it more than once and they get to vote on it more than once. So, I just felt it's common sense that if, and it's specifically to those two boards because those two boards, it's literally one goes to the other, then comes to us. You know, you, you don't have the same instance when you're on the Finance Board and you're on the Design Review Board, or, you know, when you're on the Green Task Force and you're on the Planning Board. They don't overlap. These two in particular strictly overlap each other. So, I just feel it's, it's just common sense to clean this up and, you know, and again, give opportunity to other residents to, to provide their ideas.
Further, further comments?
The only comment that I would say there is that not, most of the Design Review Boards are not going to Planning Board. A lot of the Design Review Boards are just houses or external commercial buildings. The majority of the things that go to DRB are not necessarily going to Planning Board. It's not, it's not a lot.
All the, all the, all the big buildings over four stories.
Go to Planning Board, yeah.
Go from DRB to Planning Board.
The majority of actual items that go through DRB, like the actual quantity of the numbers, are not going to.
So, so if the individual prefers to do that, then go stay on the DRB and give someone else an opportunity on the Planning Board to.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that they're not one and the other. They're always, they're not always together.
No, I know, but a lot of, you're right, you're right. It's not all of them and, and DRB does review on the home side. Unless the home is asking for a variance, then it does, then, then it would go to the, to the Planning Board. Again, I just, they're so similar in scope and so interactive with each other. I just feel it's common sense where we just, if you, I don't, you shouldn't, you shouldn't.
Let me, can I finish it? Yeah.
I'm sorry, my apologies, yeah.
So, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I, I think, but it is, it is on the commissioners themselves that are appointing both the DRB member and the Planning Board to understand that. I mean, that's really, what we're saying here is not necessarily to codify it. I think it's just a reminder to the fellow commissioners to, you know, think a little bit more pragmatic and not put two of the same people on, on the commission.
I agree with that statement.
So.
And a commission recognize?
I wouldn't codify it.
Okay, we all know I, I brought this up before. Because, so this is like Groundhog's Day for all of us, I think.
I don't know where that's going.
Oh, yeah, so nobody ever listens to me when I say it, but here we are again. So, the idea had merit the first time. It has merit this time. Having someone in any capacity, having undue influence on two groups of people is not the way that this city should operate. They should operate completely independent of each other and the two shall never meet.
Any boards?
On, on boards like DRB and Planning Board, that they can see the same people over and over? I don't think you'll see that anywhere else. There's one body here.
Can I, can I ask a question? Do we have a complaint from anybody who's gone through the process about any member?
Do you think anybody's gonna complain?
I, I, no, I, people are not shy in this town. I don't know, I don't know where we're living.
No, answer that question, no.
Okay, so, I mean, I, 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 look, I, you know, I think one of the wonderful things about this city, right, is that it was my election or Commissioner Rodriguez's election. At the end, when seven o'clock happened, right, we all stood outside the election polling stations and for the most part, I walked away shaking my opponent's hand, having cordial conversation, and the election was over, right? And so, what I, and I, and I think that tradition has been one that's been established here for a long time and I've seen in many cases, and I'll use Mark Lago not to point out someone in immediate context, who was part of a very, very hard-thought, bitter election, who was then subsequently appointed onto the Planning Board, right? To say grace over very prominent projects here, right? I think that's the one constitutional, the one charter board that exists. And so, you know, I think, I think we should embrace that tradition. We should look beyond the immediate cycle because I think it's what helps bring the community back together, right? These, you know, elections can be very strident. They can be very difficult. I, I don't disagree. Is there the potential for a conflict? Absolutely. I have not seen one manifest yet. And trust me, I get complaints about things that happen at boards all the time. Uh, I have not gotten a complaint about any individual trying to execute an outsized influence on the DRB or the Planning Board. In fact, you know, um, from my understanding of the composition of the Planning Board, very hard for any individual to really dominate any number of the personalities that serve on that board. We've got luckily very sophisticated and very seasoned people serving on that board. Um, you know, Jay Miller and Gus Barretta, who chaired the school board, are not gonna be pushed around by anybody, right? They're gonna speak their mind. So, I, you know, I, I think that the, could there be a problem? Yes. I think the better, the better course here is to exercise some restraint. And if there is a problem, um, at the, at the appropriate time, we should legislate. It's not that the idea doesn't have any merit. It's not that there isn't the possibility of a conflict, but I, I think we should move forward. And as Commissioner Caya said, probably the better solution is for, I don't even know if it's my appointee or not, but I will speak to the clerk afterwards, is the person who appointed that person onto either of the boards to have a little bit more contextual, um, awareness about who they're appointing onto the board and what are the roles they're discharging, right? So, that we don't put people in a position, wittingly or unwittingly, for them to exercise any undue influence. Right, I don't think this item needs a legislative fix. I think it just needs us to apply some common sense. I don't disagree with either of you on that point. I think the, I think the undertone of this is just one that, um, you know, speaks to us looking backwards as opposed to looking forward. And so, I, I would just suggest that, you know, we, we deal with it in the way that Commissioner Caya suggested, which is that, um, if it's, if it's our appointee, maybe we should revisit the wisdom of whether that person should serve on those two significant boards. I think you're right, they're both very significant boards. There is the potential for conflict, although I do think the overlap is fairly de minimis for the reasons that Commissioner Caya said. The majority of what gets permitted in the city are single-family homes. That goes exclusively to the DRB. We never see it and the Planning Board never sees it either. So, um, that's certainly my, my position. I mean, we are short a board member. We can, if you wanna carry this item over for the next meeting so that Commissioner Corey can weigh in and we can decide whether there's support for an immediate legislative fix, I'm happy to leave the item open that way so that we don't short-circuit the conversation, sir.
So, well, I, what you said, I, I, I 100%, and we rarely do this, but I 100% disagree with you in what you're saying is the reasoning for this. This has nothing to do with an election. This has nothing to do with one opponent, with another, nothing to do. It just also happens to be that the one individual, it was an opponent and a, that, it just happens to be. But this is about just common, like, having the same person, which by the way, we're both, or the same person was appointed by the Vice Mayor to both. So, after me and him spoke, I'm like, you already have.
We know the culprit.
Huh?
Oh, my goodness.
We know the. Not this Vice Mayor, the current Vice Mayor.
No, 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 we're not looking at her. Yeah.
So, it has nothing to do with an election. This is just about, you know, I don't think that we should have the same person on two boards that are, and by the way, all, yes, homes go to the DRB and not to Planning Board, but all major issues, variances, setbacks, asking for permission to do anything goes to DRB and goes to Planning Board. The little homes, I'm not worried, who cares? That's insignificant. I'm, we're talking about major things that happen.
Variances end up here, right? It's not like, it's not like.
They all go through DRB and they all go through Planning Board.
And I, I get it, but, but again, so I think, I think the.
Let's give other people an opportunity. And again, pick whichever the better the board is. I don't care who, what the individual picks.
Look, the person serves, the person serves at the pleasure of the person that appointed them, right? So, I think the, I think the, I think the question is for the person who made the appointment to consider whether they should exercise that discretion in a different manner. Again, I think in the absence of any allegation, any complaint, which I have not heard in, and and his service predates my tenure here.
There's no, there's no complaints, there's, there hasn't been a complaint, I just think from current, even if you want to grandfather it to, to the, I just think going forward, it's smart for the city not to have the same person making the decision on two separate boards that interact so much with each other. If you want to grandfather the person into their renewal, I, I, I don't care, that's fine. I'm just saying going forward, let's give others opportunities to, 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 to put their views and let's, let's, let's spread the wealth a little bit.
Commissioner Gaya, can I ask you a question regarding this, because you served on the DRB, I, I never served on any lower board.
Who, me?
Yes. I mean.
When you said DRB, I'm like, oh, he's talking.
DRB, I know, I know Commissioner, I know, I know Commissioner Bonich served on the planning board for, for a little bit.
So did I.
Okay, and so the question I have is, I mean, the DRB, my, my layman's interaction was that it often had trouble procuring quorum, correct? Or it had, it had a history of procuring quorum?
When I was chairman of the DRB, we did not miss quorum that one time.
Okay, okay.
Proud to say that. And the new DRB is always meeting.
Correct, and so.
No, 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 it did, and now it's been corrected.
Oh, okay, there we go.
Now it's been corrected.
So, so my, I mean, to my, to my knowledge, planning board has had, and Madam Clerk, you've been here a good while. So, can you share with your perspective on whether either board has had recurring quorum issues? Because I think the other side of this for me is, I don't know that we have an infinitely long line of people. One, with the experience in the field, and two, with a desire and passion to serve on either board, right? And so.
We had, we had a quorum issue on the DRB within the past, um, two years. But that has been corrected, it's fully staffed. But the planning board has never had.
We have seven now, right?
Yeah. The planning board has never had quorum issues. Everybody wants to be on that board.
Again, if you want to grandfather the current person, I'm fine until the renewal comes up, that's fine. This is for looking towards the future, let's be, like, Commissioner Gaya always says, be best in class. Let's give other people the, the opportunities to provide, provide their ideas. That's it, I mean.
So, okay, so let's, I think, I think this is a discussion item, I think we've had a discussion about the issue. There's nothing that precludes any person who feels passionately about this as a policy fix from working with the city attorney and bringing forward a legislative fix. So, I'm happy, if you want to have a conversation, so we have the benefit of a fifth member to weigh in before we take that step, I'm happy to carry this over on the agenda, so we hear from the vice mayor who's missing. Or, we can, we can, we can wrap up, we can wrap up the conversation, and I, I'd say to either colleague who. No, I know, but I'm saying to, I'm looking at both of you, because you've both rightfully, you mentioned that you brought this up very early on.
I didn't, I know.
No, I know, initially, initially it was, you know, my colleague to the left who brought this issue forward. So, I just want to understand from the two folks who have been, who've raised this issue, is this something you want to have by way of further discussion in the context of pending legislation? Or do you want me to carry this over to the next agenda, we can keep it in the posture of a discussion item?
With, with the vice mayor.
With the vice mayor, what is your preference? Because I think those are the two.
I think we ask him first.
Okay, sir, what would you like to do?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I, I have no issues with having the vice mayor, he's part of this commission, so having him voice his opinion is fine with me.
So, let's, let's, if I can get a motion to defer this to the November eighteenth meeting, we've had a discussion here. We'll get the vice mayor's, um, perspective, and then we can always direct staff to act in accordance with the majority of the board. Is that okay?
Okay, yeah, so I'll move the motion to defer.
Okay, is there a second?
Are you gonna second?
Huh?
Are you gonna second?
Me? I'm not planning to, no.
So, it's gonna die? I don't know, I've.
No, I'll second it.
I'm, I'm happy to second it, I thought there would be a natural second, that's why I wasn't jumping at the chance, okay.
I'm not afraid to have the vice mayor.
A motion by Commissioner Gaya and a second by Commissioner Rodriguez, okay? Without, without opposition, opposition to the deferral, let's show it, uh, deferred to November eighteenth. I'm gonna save ourselves a roll call vote, okay? Okay, so. Okay, moving on, um, can we read M two, please?
Yes, Art in Public Places Amendment, clarifying eligible locations for public art.
I believe Commissioner Bonich, this is your item?
Actually, it, it had been drafted by the city attorney.
Would you like her to start the presentation then?
I, I think that would be better, because I think she probably has better verbiage, and then I can talk about it.
Madam City Attorney, you're recognized, thank you.
I'm happy to. This was brought forward by Commissioner Bonich. It's regarding a potential, whether a potential clarification should be made to the Art in Public Places ordinance. And essentially, it would ensure that any art displayed in public areas or public, or only publicly accessible areas, and not other areas which may not be publicly accessible, like lobbies or internal spaces that are not accessible to the public. Currently, it's discussed.
City Attorney, can I, my apologies.
Yes.
I, I forgot, we have someone online who's here on item four, if I could pause this.
Sure.
Commissioner Bonich, and just call item four really quickly.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you can read the record, that way I can, I can keep Ms. Sanchez, who's been patiently waiting. Keep her off of Zoom, yes, thank you, Samantha, for letting me know.
Item four, a resolution to the Mayor City Commission of the City of South Miami Florida, selecting approval in a five-year term agreement with Public Sector Performance Associates, LLC, for performance-based audit services of city departments pursuant to requests for proposals, number CSM twenty twenty-five dash eleven, in amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. City Manager, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, um, this item, um, is a furthering requirement of the charter which stipulates that each department would get a performance-based audit, uh, once every five years. We had gone out to, we had a prior firm, and we went out for a competitive process to identify, uh, a new firm. We had seven proposals, uh, ranging from two thousand and sixty-eight, uh, five hundred to one point four million. This is a five-year, five-year engagement. The committee evaluated and also did oral interviews. The firm that's being recommended, uh, Mayor, as you mentioned, and Ms. Monica Sanchez, who's a managing partner of Public Sector Performance, is, is online to, to also answer any questions. Their bid is two thou, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. So, that's a rank of minimum vendor to be our partner to comply with the charter and do a, a performance audit review once every five years of the departments. And in your item, there's a schedule attached how we would, which departments will go through year one, year two, year three, year four, year five. Those reports will be issued by September thirtieth of each year. They would also assist the departments in, in having, creating, um, the ICMA International County City Managers Association Performance Reports, uh, which I think would be a really good value added. So, Ms., uh, Ms. Sanchez is managing partners online, in case you have any questions for her.
Colleagues, any questions? None?
I have a quick question to the manager. The contract is for five years, but they do an audit every, once every five years?
Of each department, so there's a schedule that rotates, um, the departments, like, for example, year one would be Police and Public Works. And then Human Resources and Admin Services, year two, Finance, including IT, Parking and Procurement, year three, Parks and Rec and Culture, year four, and then Development Services, Department, year five, and that way we comply with each department once every five years.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, I, I do have a quick question. Could you, I know we have retained a, you know, public accounting firm for our, uh, general audit annually. How is this audit different than, other than it's a charter requirement, how's it different than the financial audits that we perform annually?
A financial audit is, is, is really taking more, ensuring the integrity of, uh, you know, our financial accounting. In this case, we're taking a look at how the departments are organized, how they're performing, that they'll take a look, you know, like, say, Development Services, permitting, they'll take a look at their process, you know, efficiency, come up with recommendations. So, it's really more performance-based, not necessarily financially-based, uh, as in, as in audit would be.
Okay, and when, when have we been doing this regularly and faithfully in compliance with the charter requirements?
Yes, uh, this has been in the charter since the year two thousand.
Okay, and do we have the reports in the last series of audits?
Yes, uh, the previous firm was Baker Tilly.
Okay, I'm just, I'd just be curious to see those, if you wouldn't mind circulating those, I'd love to just peruse them in my free time. Peer excitement, yeah. Okay, thank you, uh, this is a public hearing item, so do you remember the public who'd like to address the commission on item four? Which, again, is the approval of a five-year term agreement with Public Sector Performance Associates for performance-based audits required by our charter, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one in the chamber, Madam Clerk, uh, is there anyone other than Ms. Sanchez online?
No.
Okay, so, uh, we will close the public hearing. Ms. Sanchez, thank you for your help, we look forward to your findings. Colleagues, further comments? Is there a motion to adopt the item?
I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Gaya and a second by Commissioner Bonich, Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bonich.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaya.
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez.
Yes.
Item passes for two.
Thank you, okay, if we can go back to, um, the discussion item.
We have Jason waiting also, maybe we.
Jason, you hear an item, I thought we got in four.
M three.
M three? Oh, Manor Lane, I'm sorry, yes, so let's table, if I can.
Sorry.
AP, Art in Public Places, and we'll take up, uh, M three, it's also Commissioner Bonich's item, I don't know if there's a presentation by anyone?
Jason falling asleep out there.
Sorry, Jason, my apologies.
There's not a presentation by anyone, I just have notes that are mine, so I'm just gonna hand them to you guys, so that as I talk to them, you can see them.
Great. This is, uh, M three, this is a discussion regarding future ideas for, um, the Manor Lane property. That's okay.
Ah, you know what? I've, I'm learning.
Oh.
Oh, wow.
I'm learning. I. Yes, I do, I have. Jason, you're more than happy to have a copy, I can't, to give a copy to.
I'll share with Danny.
Here. No, that's okay, I am more than happy to share. I just believe that if we're investing in a park that is next to a park and across the street from a park, that we should be activating that park and making it so that the money that, I mean, let's be so for real right now. Money's coming off of the tax rolls, because it's going from private property to our property. If nothing is built on there, obviously, they were gonna build a development on there, that would have generated taxes, that will no longer exist. And so, if we continue along the road of spending money and buying things, and we don't have things that are revenue generating, I think we run into issues in the long run, and I think we owe it to our residents, all of them, all twelve thousand of them, to consider different ideas versus just leaving trees and no cars and everything, which is, I'm sure, what the neighbors would like. But those neighbors aren't the only neighbors in the entire city of South Miami. So, when I look at it, we looked at, like, pickleball and what are people doing with pickleball right now? In our city, our pickleball courts are busy all the time. I don't believe we charge for our pickleball courts. You can, I can give you one too, Quentin, I, I handed some this way. And it, so, I am saying by way of this, we need to activate this park. We have Fuchs Park across the street, which is a passive park. We have the underlying in that area, which will be a passive park. We need to make the things that we purchase work for us. This is one idea, it's not by far the only idea. But I think if we look at things, if you have pickleball there, even just four courts, which leaves a lot of green space left in that area, you are right. Literally, plugging into the vein of something that people are looking for. We have people sending us emails, even from other cities, saying, hey, I can't play pickleball at this time. We are offering these courts, most of the time, if I'm not mistaken, for free, correct? So, they're free. Somewhere along the line, we need to charge at least people who are not residents fees to use our things.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you agnostic as to where we do this, or do you, is it just a matter of putting, getting more productive use out of some space? Because I, I would, I would.
Double.
Double, because I, I, I think personally, this would be a poor location for an active activation, because we already have parking issues with the neighboring office building.
Where would you suggest?
I would suggest across the street.
At Fuchs.
At Fuchs, where you have a green space that is, does not have any, any native trees. It has an area that is open and could be, could be, you know, developed, and is a green space that is, I walk there every day, is never utilized. I mean, it does have the tot lot, but the adjacent green space, which probably could accommodate a couple of, a couple of pickleball, three or four pickleball courts.
We've looked at that in the past.
And it has an existing parking, it has an existing parking reservoir, which I think is the key issue for me. So, if you're, if you are agnostic as to either location, I'd be happy to support us exploring, again, the addition of these courts at Fuchs in lieu of Manor Lane Park.
And then what are you suggesting at Manor Lane? I, I am one hundred percent open to doing it at Fuchs, I have no problem with doing it at Fuchs.
Yeah, I think the Manor Lane, for me, activation for the park, it's, it's gotta be some sort of a passive park.
Dog park, tot lot?
It could be, it could have a dog, it could have a dog amenity area, I think, you know, that is probably gonna be in the vein of a passive pocket park. In, in my mind, in terms of what we could do there, because you are constrained by the right-of-way to the, I'm sure you know what direction, Eightieth Street?
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't start saying north, south, east, west.
No, 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 I, I'm so, anyhow, on Eightieth Street, and you do not have any sort of natural areas that can easily accommodate parking. It's kind of has the same problem that Bob Walsh Park has, in terms of its organization, and which is why I've been pushing this integration with the school, because we can leverage that parking infrastructure. So, I would tell you, I have, I'm perfectly fine with adding pickleball courts to our inventory.
And I'm agnostic, I want people to have to pay for them. There is an entire system out there that is a digital system, you reserve the court, you pay for it, you show up.
But given that we may be going into a world where of property tax reform, it becomes even a more ascendant issue. So, I'm fine with getting people used to paying for amenities that have natural demand. They do it for, they do it for soccer, they do it for pickleball, it doesn't have to be an outrageously high fee, but just something helps.
And if you look at what they're doing, and it's in here, if you look at what they're doing in other cities, they have quote-unquote free times, but they also have times where they charge. So, we could come up with, like, you know, Parks and Rec has done a great job of coming up with resident fees and non-resident fees, so we can capture that as well. But I think that we need to do something, even if it's a more passive activation there. I think Fuchs Park is a great idea. Have no problem with that. As a matter of fact, we looked at Paddle, Padell.
Padell.
Five courts there.
Yeah.
So, I.
Yeah, but pickle is a little bit louder than Padell, so I don't know that we'd go crazy with five courts there. But, you know what, if you want a more passive thing, then let's do a dog park. I mean, people love dog parks, I love dog parks.
We could have, we could have a dog enclosure area there, I don't think it's, I don't think, I don't think it's, I think, I'm open to any number of ideas. I think the, the problem with adding facilities, that part of the charm of the lot is preserving the canopy that's there, and so, harder to integrate courts for that reason. When I think of Fuchs, there's just this natural green area that sits between a ring of trees and very easily, I think, the slot, I would think three pickleball courts there, without too much difficulty, but, you know, that's something that we can ask the director to look at.
So, then, are we in agreement then, that we'll look at it for a few?
Wait, wait, we haven't, I haven't heard from, I haven't, I was, I was shutting you out before, now I'm shutting out this side of the dais.
Oh, my God, like, that's possible.
Yes, sir.
We haven't really been in a position to just dictate what a park's gonna do. Why don't we just go follow the process, give it back to the city manager and the Parks Department, and figure out, give us options of what the, what, what different opportunities they could have for that park? I mean.
Which park, sorry?
Which park?
I, I think, I think, I think that maybe the idea is we, we send staff out to look at options for activating, activating or improving both, right? Are there, are, is there an activation for Fuchs that provides us an ability to add an amenity to that park? Which, again, I would tell you is, that green space in my mind is woefully underutilized. I don't see kids, we heard a lot about this in the prior email chatter, people throwing balls out there, and I, I'm there all the time with my dog. I walk there at least once a day, never happening on a Saturday, right? The, the tot lot gets utilization, and the volleyball court, everything else, the shelter when it's rented, absolutely. The walking path does, but that green space never trodden on, from what I can tell. And we should maybe put a camera on it, so we can figure out what's actually happening there.
Oh, my God.
Right, to dispel the, uh, dispel the, dispel the, the lore of it, right? But I, I think maybe if you want to give staff, Commissioner Gaya, if you're amenable, to look at how we can activate both and leverage, one can be an active, have an active amenity, one can have a more passive orientation, when I say passive, it could include a dog amenity, I would put that in that category. But I think, you know, the, the opportunity with Manor Lane Park is, you know, should it be our Centennial Park? I think it was an interesting reference, that we have a name, right? Kind of the gift to honor the next hundred years, right, and create another green space? I don't know, just an idea, anyhow.
It's just a name.
We can discard it as well, we'll name it after you, Commissioner Bonich.
Bonich Park.
It's okay, I have the Bonich Park.
So, is that the direction we want to give, have?
I think that is a great direction, and I'm very much looking forward to seeing pickleball.
Fantastic, okay, let's move on then.
If I knew this was gonna be this easy, I'd have one of these ready every meeting.
You should, it was very, it was very well organized, there you go.
The courts look great.
You intimidated me with your preparation.
And, and we do, we do have to do something for Manor Lane, I at least started thinking about it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, what items we have left? We have, um.
One and two.
We have one, one and, sorry, M two and C A one, right? Okay, we've, uh, we haven't, have we, we haven't voted on, on number two, have we?
No, one and two, no.
Okay, so let's, let's take up item two, because I don't think there'll be any discussion.
Okay, item two, a resolution to the Mayor City Commission of the City of South Miami Florida, approving and authorizing the purchase of solid waste disposal services from the Miami-Dade County Department of Solid Waste Management in amount not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. No, we were, that's the interlocal, this is our, um, con, it's a contract of the approval of the expenditure for tipping fees for this, for this current. for this, for this current calendar year. Okay. Mr. Manager, why don't you just, you know, add that into the record or whatever clarification is necessary on item two?
No, Mayor, you're correct. I mean, uh, similarly to last commission meeting where we had utilities, water, and F P N L, the similar expenditure that we bring forward, um, at the beginning of the fiscal year to authorize, um, the charges for, uh, uh, on the disposability on per ton, going from seventy-four forty per ton to, um, seventy-six twelve, uh, per ton. And then the transfer fee, uh, going from sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents to sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents. So you're just approving, uh, uh, the disposal, the purchase of, and an expense of the nine hundred thousand dollars for this service.
Thank you. And, and, and Mr. Manager, the only thing I would add, Commissioner Bonich, to your question as to the interplay between the two items is that should we not execute the interlocal? The fee that was just quoted would increase to the non-contract rate. I don't know if we have that handy. Am I recalling the posture correctly? So if we don't sign the interlocal, the penalty for not signing a twenty-year agreement is that we pay more for the dispositions. It goes to about, you know, ninety, ninety dollars a ton. What's the? Yes, ma'am. So add twenty percent to the nine hun- to the nine hundred thousand.
That's ridiculous. How's every city not losing their ever-loving minds over this?
They are. So, but again, it's just that the item was presented without notice to the board. We had asked for it, Mr. Mungus had asked for it two or three times over the last calendar year since we knew our interlocal was expiring, was not provided. It appeared at a committee agenda, luckily a lobbyist friend sent it to me. Actually, it was Mr. Lopez, who was representing the, uh, Waster Rail Party, sent it to me to ask me what the posture was of the, are competing interlocal? And that's what kinda tipped at least me off to the fact that this was moving.
Yeah, Mayor, the, the non-contract rate is one hundred and fourteen dollars.
Okay, so instead of paying seventy-six, they're charging us basically a fifty-dollar surcharge. So. Okay?
Quick. I, uh, Mayor? Um. When we were talking earlier about trash, um, I did bring up a point. I know Mayor Starter wasn't thrilled with that idea, but you, we can order bigger bins to your house if you want. Um, huh? About recycle? I'm just saying, we're, we're gonna be now taking on more costs for our solid waste where the recycling, if we do it every other week, again, we can order bigger bins if you want for your residents. Um, we're, we're looking at six-figure savings possibly.
I don't, I don't know that we're looking at six-figure savings, and I think the only.
Well, I spoke about it with the manager.
Oh, we are? Okay, that's fine. That was not the number a couple of years ago.
Low six-figure, low.
So the question, the only question I have is, I think it's a conversation that we have, we have all been struggling with because it was, you know.
So my question was, is this an option?
It is, it is an option. It is an option. I think we were, we were waiting for this elusive study to happen. Now that we switched vendors, I know that was one, if you can refresh a recollection, Mr. Manager, I know that it was, I think, we scheduled recently, that Waste Management was gonna kind of go through our disposition run on our own, so we knew what we were even generating per run.
Yeah, that, that's, um, it's in the works, and then the consultant is doing the analysis, providing the information. Um, but it would be an extraction of our.
Are they gonna get, do the two runs? Or how are they, or is it just gonna be the one time they're gonna run through?
One, one run.
Okay. So at least we'll know what our, what our data is.
What total pickup is.
By the way, I'm totally open to having the conversation about larger bins and reducing the frequency. Yeah, okay.
Good. I, I, I'm just saying, it'll save us money considering that now we're taking on more money.
Yes, I think this was, uh, the increase in service was really done as a, as my conservative friends like to say, as a, um, what's the term they use when they? No, not as, not, not that, as a virtue signaling exercise. Yeah.
Oh, I'm not, I.
Anyhow.
Hmm.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
You see.
Do we have a, do we have a motion on? Do we have a motion on item two?
I'll move the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kaye and a second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll on item two.
Yes, Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaye?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item passes four zero.
Okay, let's move back to, uh, M two.
Is that all we have left? No, we have number one.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I have, I have, I have comments on that, so.
Okay. Okay, hold on, move back to Lily.
Art in public places, so I'm, I'm sorry for interrupting your presentation before Madam City Attorney.
Okay. Art in public places. This item was brought by Commissioner Bonich. Um, the question is whether a clarification is needed to the ordinance to make it very clear that only art displayed in publicly, public areas or publicly accessible areas is, is permissible. I think the issue may arise from one particular clause in the existing ordinance, which says it could be placed in a publicly visible space and not necessarily open to the public for access.
You're recognized, yeah.
Okay, and, and this comes into play because if it is in a lobby area, many lobbies have curtains that they close in the evening, so then it obscures the art that is supposed to be in public places. The name of, the thing is art in public places, not art that you can see in, from a public place. If, if it was art that you can see from a public place, my best friend Bridget, who lives across the street, my house would be art in public places because she could see the art inside my house from her house.
When you don't close your curtains.
When I, oh yeah, when I don't close the curtains. So, so literally, I'm just saying, we need to clarify it so that it is in a public place available.
Or you don't wanna clarify it so it's visible from a public place?
No, it's not. No, it's gotta physically be able to be accessed.
So I'm sorry, there's an actual condition now where the, we've approved the art in public places within a lobby?
Well, I think someone took artistic license and made that an art in public places, and we don't have enough clarification in our art in public places verbiage to say that is not the case.
So to the city attorney, the language is ambiguous currently? What's our position?
I believe so, Mayor, because in another section in the ordinance, it says it could be publicly visible space. And as Commissioner Bonich mentioned, that doesn't necessarily mean it's publicly accessible in a public area.
Okay, and, and do we have an actual condition where we have a project that's now incorporating an improvement that's going to be in a private space? Mr. Manager?
The, uh, yes. Uh, the current Avalon project has a piece inside the lobby, which is adjacent to the big plate glass window, viewable from the outside, questionable at times, and certainly if the curtains closed, is not. And I think, Commissioner, I don't wanna speak for you, but I think that that's one of the things that you identified as.
But, but, but again, then staff made a determination that that was, we've made a determination at, in Development Services, I'm assuming, when we reviewed the submittal, that that was an appropriate location for the art in public places.
Yes, I, I have not gone back and reviewed it, but obviously, I'm assuming that, that that was, uh, that was the case?
I thought their, I thought their A P P was the plaza and the improvements to the plaza.
There's two, two, is the plaza.
There's two elements.
Correct.
Why? Because, because the plaza does not trip the financial threat or doesn't satisfy them?
It probably doesn't satisfy, satisfy the full amount. And so there's a piece that went in. There's three pieces. There's a piece in the plaza. There's a wall mural that was painted on the approach into the garage on the ground floor, on the, on the east side of the project, by the main entrance. There's a, there's an entrance on that side, which really faces.
This is on the, on the east side?
On the east side, yeah. Faces a lobby.
Okay.
There's a mural that was painted on, on that wall, uh, along the, the entrance to the garage. And then there's a, two pieces inside the lobby, adjacent to the plate glass window. But in many cases, as have I, you know, have shared with, uh, Avalon, that curtain may be closed sometimes, maybe because of the sun orientation. And so it kinda defeats the purpose of it being public, if you will. So I've had this conversation with him. So I'm assuming that what you said is correct, that at some point, we deemed it eligible based on the language. Um, I also have had a conversation with Mr. Schreiber about reconsidering that that would actually, uh, receive credit for it. And I think he's amenable for it not to receive credit. That's a recent conversation.
Okay. Okay, well, I think the clarification's warranted. Sounds like it. Huh?
I mean, it's a common sense argument.
I don't know. No, I, I agree. I'm just, I didn't, I, you know, there's, look, I mean, quite often, a code will say something, but there's an interpretation by staff that basically becomes the de facto rule. So if staff is struggling with that determination, then let's clarify legislatively in the apples.
And I think it's especially warranted because our art in public places program is in its infancy. And at, the more we are able to close these types of loopholes, the more our city will benefit from what the program was, you know, made for.
Hundred percent agree.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Further comments? Okay, so staff has a direction it needs to draft through remedial ordinance? Okay. Cool. Okay, great. Let's read item one then. Let's close it out.
Item one, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Miami Florida, approving and submitting in Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, COPS Matching Grant from the United States Department of Justice, D O J, for the COPS Hiring Program in an amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. You wanna present the item?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, um, this, um, this item is a, a grant that had been submitted back in June thirtieth. Um, and we had a way to, whether we were gonna be awarded or recommended for award. Uh, I think we got notified on October tenth. Uh, COPS Grant, uh, federal program that allows for enhancing staffing, not necessarily funding staffing that, that, that is normally funded through local proceeds. In this case, this program, uh, if the commission deems to, to move forward on, we would have to accept, formally accept the award by November twenty-fourth. Um, this is an up to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It would give us the ability to hire above and beyond our, our established headcount, which is at, you know, at full staffing is at fifty-one. Um, we would not be able to hire an additional staff, police officer until we reach at full staffing, which is usually a, a challenge for many agencies. Um, we're currently one, one body away from that, given that we have a one vacancy. This, this program would offset, in our case, given where the salary is, um, forty-eight percent of the cost of an officer. Um, we would, um, uh, also then, that's a three-year, uh, commitment to fund it, and then we would have to commit that, that position would be held twelve months beyond the three years uh, on our, on our dime. The thought process here, uh, the chief and I, when we had discussed this opportunity back, back in June, was that, um, the last two fiscal years, I had communicated that I, I had not brought forward any recommendations to increase staffing, um, given that we had a number of vacancies that has, as we have discussed here, and, and we had challenges in fulfilling, uh, in filling those vacancies. So I didn't wanna increase the cost of it when we couldn't even fill what we were staffed for. Um, so we did have an increase of an officer in the, in my first fiscal year, which was, um, twenty-three, twenty-four, um, or twenty-four, twenty-five, no, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, thank you. And, and so the two subsequent years, I, I have not brought forward a recommendation for, for the reasons that, that I stated. Uh, obviously, with the intent of bringing forward increasing the staffing, uh, probably for next fiscal year. There's, the history of the department has had, maybe in the last ten years, it's, it's moved between fifty to, to fifty-three. Uh, the department had reached sixty, all the way back into about twenty years ago, had reached the, the staffing of sixty. So the, the thought process here was if, if we're gonna be recommending increasing our staffing uh, by at least one for the next fiscal year, uh, and in, within a three-year period, we may see, you know, maybe two more, that we may be able to offset that through a grant if we were awarded that grant and offset that cost, uh, at the forty-eight percent level. And then we would keep those, those officers, uh, you know, for, for, for the remainder. We would not necessarily be inclined to reduce our staffing at that point. So we do have that burden that we have to carry that cost, um, beyond the three years. But the fact that we would be in a position to increase our staffing and commit to that, that we could offset the cost by forty-eight percent, uh, up to three officers, if we decide to, to go up to the three officers, there's no commitment that we have to. Um, and, and so that's the opportunity before us. Uh, again, the, the, the grant is, is not, uh, we're not bound to this grant until we, uh, formally accept the award, and that's why it's before you. Um, we did not staff, uh, we did not add a position based on this because we didn't know if we were gonna get it when we passed the budget. Um, but we always said if we were to get it, uh, we can always hire and go above, um, the fifty-one by one, let's say fifty-two, because we know we have ebb and flow of retirements, and we're expecting, you know, several people that are on the drop. So, uh, although we would go, let's say, higher to fifty-two, once we hit fifty-one, we may drop back down, given that we have, you know, a couple of, uh, folks, uh, officers in the drop program. Uh, and then for that first year, that we would carry it that way because we would probably have a salary savings. What we do for year two and three, or, or, or sooner than that, remains to be seen, uh, potentially from a financial standpoint. But at a minimum, we could do one officer if we accept this award as soon as we hit fifty-one, um, which, where we have people in the queue and, and, and in process. So I just wanna give you an overview on that, and certainly the chief can, can, can provide further overview and any other questions that, that you may have.
Anyone have any questions, the chief or the, uh, manager? I'm gonna lead us off. Go ahead.
This can be answered by the, the chief or the city manager. Now that we've brought Avalon Bay online, are we, as, at staffed at fifty-one, are we still covering for that additional mass of humanity? So I don't know how we are saying we need fifty-one, we need fifty-two. How do we make that determination? And right now, knowing that that's come online and that more is coming online, how are we gonna make up those numbers?
I have the same question, which is what, what, what's our metric? Because one of the things I'm struggling with this is what is our staffing ratio? Corollary question is, we've also seen crime drop substantially year over year, and we're kind of at all-time probably lows for the last fifty years, society-wide. So what's the staffing metric we're trying to achieve, chief? Because that was not elaborated on in any of the backup.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let the chief elaborate on, on, on the staffing. But, you know, what, I would, I would say that we, we would look broader than just crime, obviously. The, the biggest things that we face are, are quality of life type issues, you know, as we know, the block the box and that kind of traffic enforcement, which, you know, it, it requires a static, static officer and, and it takes somebody away from, uh, driving through the neighborhoods and that visibility. So, you know, I would, I would look at things broader than just crime.
Yeah, I, so I'm, I'm curious, again, broad question. What's a staffing metric? What are these men and women going to do? Because nothing was elabor, nothing was elaborated about that in any of the backup. And just to kind of get into my commentary, for me, my heartburn about this issue is that we are proposing to add three people to the T O. We may need them. It's probably a very good reason for it. But we went through an entire budget process, and this is the first that this possibility was discussed. And I was the literal, you know, turd in the punch bowl during the budget, during the budget process talking, when we were trying to hire five staff people, saying, can we afford to do that? And it would have made sense to have a conversation about the opportunity of the grant during that point in time. So, that, that's kind of the posture I'm coming out of, which is, what's the driving need? We clearly submitted a grant, I've read the grant materials, I read the application, Mr. Rival provided to me. It seems like part of this is the quality of life issue, we're trying to address it, part is homelessness, it looked like. Uh, but I want to understand what the operational need is for these three bodies.
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing on the, on the discussion purposes. I mean, I did mention that we were not recommending to increase it, because we had trouble staffing.
Sir, I just rewatched the entire budget workshop from, from July. This issue never came up one time.
I, I, I've had conversations-
Two and a half hours last night.
I've had conversations about, if I can finish my response, please. I've had conversations about this. The issue of whether we were gonna get an award or not, we didn't know at that time.
We never even advised the grant was applied for.
Uh, Mayor, may, may I finish?
You may, you may, but I want, I want the facts on the record, because it's important, because this Mayor has been asking about staffing from the first day he got here, and passed a resolution to basically make sure that we're getting staffing updates, because, so, again, I'm being put in a position where I'm likely gonna vote against a COPS grant, because we are having no conversation about what our goals are with respect to the department. And so I would have expected in the budget process, that we would have had a window into, number one, that we had applied. Number two, that we would have potentially had three people added to the TO, when we've already added thirteen people to this organization since fiscal year twenty-three started. Right, that's a million dollars of payroll, conservatively, that we've added thus far. I'm two positions short, so that number's light. So I'm a little frustrated that my only notice onto this issue for this entire board is an item being dropped on the agenda, right? Because this is not particularly the right we're heading into, which I remind my colleagues, we're going into a world of tax reform, property tax reform, that's being put on the ballot, and the one place where we will have no operational flexibility with all seven proposals is with respect to our police budget. So we're raising our base requirements, because the way the language reads in every proposal is the same language, cut and paste. I can read you the line references, if you want them per bill, but it says, "Total funding for law enforcement cannot be less than such funding total budgeted amount for fiscal years twenty-six or fiscal years twenty-seven, whichever is higher." This would change the TO and our funding requirements for fiscal year twenty-six, from an operational TO of fifty-one officers to fifty-four, with a corresponding funding commitment, and we are locked in. So, with that as a background context, I, I'm, I'm happy to hear your thoughts.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, I, I, I would have had no recommendation to increase our TO by three, for the reasons that I stated. Even, even the prospect, if we knew that we were gonna get the grant, obviously that's a different conversation. We had no clue, we weren't gonna know till, till October. So, I, I would have not brought a recommendation forward to increase the TO much less by three, because we wouldn't do that in one year. So, that's the reason for not having a recommendation to increase the TO. I, there, there was no information that would, so even today, there's no, nothing changes as a result of the recommendation at that time. The issue of going back and talking about positions that have been added over a three-year period, I don't understand the connection whatsoever.
The connection is, the connection, the connection-
Do you allow me to finish, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, go right ahead.
You know, I, I think, I think obviously you don't want to hear a response, so I'll finish here, and I'll let the Chief answer your question.
No, go right ahead, I'm, I'm sorry, my apologies, you have the time.
No, it's okay, sir.
Go ahead, Chief.
Uh, as the Manager had pointed out, we, we applied for this grant, uh, back in June, uh, but most agencies don't apply for this grant, because they'll never reach it. Uh, this is an opportunity for us to actually staff to full staffing, and then be able to go above and beyond. The reason for it, uh, Mr. Mayor and Commission, is that we're planning for the future of South Miami. Uh, we have Avalon Bay, as Commissioner Bonich spoke about. We have, I would call it Avalon Bay Two, eventually coming online. We have Alta across the street that will come online. We're talking about the roadway inn as a potential, uh, uh, density development. So the density is, is being developed, and we just had recently the Box Two, if you will, completed, and then coming online, as well as Soomey Park. So we're trying to anticipate for that, as well as the, the Commission's direction, that there's an opportunity for us to annex portions of the north end of the city. So for us, it was just a future planning. Uh, where will these bodies go? Yeah, there are quality of life issues that need to be addressed right here in our downtown area. Uh, those bodies would be community policing bodies to address quality of life issues here in, uh, the town center area, as well as up into our Lee Park community.
Yes, you recognize.
Can you kind of share with us what the metric is right now? So fifty-one officers, you know, how do you break that down, so we can see it when we get to fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four? What does that mean?
So, right now, uh, we just hired our fifty-first officer, um, after a recent retirement. So that person just came on board, they'll be swear in, uh, sworn in, I should say, uh, next week. Um, so we are at full staffing, this is an opportunity for us to go above and beyond that. Uh, as the Manager put out, and as probably well explained in the, in the memorandums, is that, once we hit fifty-one, we have, that's our bottom line, we have to stay at that for this grant. If we hire fifty-two, and number fifty-one leaves, we're still getting the benefit of a fifty percent, or forty-eight percent, uh, salary, uh, sponsorship, if you will, from, from the Department of Justice grant. We still have to get back above that fifty-one, to hire anything above and beyond that. So, if we saw, let's say we do the first one in year one, and we never get a chance and opportunity to do two and three, we owe nothing to the federal government. This is all, uh, you know, reimbursable, uh, piece. It's not us having to don't, you know, put the money up front on the table, so to speak. We could go through this, and you could all approve it tonight, and say, yes, we're gonna, we approve you to move forward, and we never even get there, we never even use it, there's no commitment on our part financially.
You recognize.
With Avalon, like, we were at fifty-one before Avalon, correct? We've been at fifty-one for a couple of years, as our target-
We've been at fifty-one since fiscal year twenty-four, when we added, when we both got on the commission, added back a position that had been reduced in the prior years. We had a fifty officer TO for twenty-three, we increased it to fifty-one, so we went back to basically the prior balance.
Okay, so then-
We, we were never at full staffing, we were at forty-six officers, we had a roughly-
Yeah, I remember, so, with the addition of Avalon Bay, we have not added any additional police officers to cover that humanity? Well, it is, it's a mass of humanity, I mean, it's like-
So, yeah, but, so, again, you know, following, following the broader conversation, society, and again, I'm not driven by what happens with Doge, but we just saw, right, the Chief Finance Officer come into this market and say that, you know, we measure by population growth and inflation, right? And our county's accused of overspending three hundred and two million dollars, on whatever metric they're using. I, I have a fundamental, what I, what I see here, what gives me trouble, is that I don't understand what part of our operational plan today is not being satisfied, right? And to me, it's not necessarily, because, you know, you could have more density, but you can have fewer service calls in that kind of environment, right? More people does not always result in more service calls. In fact, in, in, in fact, I would say, with the development of Soomey Park, and the de-concentration of poverty on that property, right, you're adding more affluent people, right? You raise the level of the neighborhood, in some ways. And so I would imagine your aggregate service calls, in a lot of those contexts, Liberty City, and the redevelopment of that public housing, has had that kind of an impact. So what I'm trying to understand is, financially, we're making a substantial commitment in an environment where we're going to be locked in budgetarily, by the state likely, should any of this stuff happen, right, so we lose operational flexibility as a commission, to make adjustments if we have future recurring revenues, which we know we will have, if some of the more extreme proposals pass. And so my, my challenge is, what is the operational demand today? Not in the future, because, you know, the market could change, and Avalon Bay Two could go away, Avalon Bay is there. Right, we don't know yet, I think, because it's too early in its history, to understand what kind of service calls it's generating, but we do know that Box One has been open for a couple of years, and so Chief, I would ask, what kind of service calls are we getting out of that project? Or out of Soomey Park, now that they're open for, been open for a year? Are we seeing an escalation in demand for services based on that, that product? Or is the volume relatively flat? Because the crime statistics lead me to believe that they're going, we're going in the opposite direction. That we've got, we've got less crime, and so my question is, what is the return? What I'm, what I'm struggling with is, I'm likely giving budgetary flexibility away in future years, because of what may happen, right? In an environment where the demand for police services may be flat, right, even though we're adding bodies. That's what I'm not understanding, and so I'm trying to get a sense, and none, none of the background material that I've read gives me any sense of what operationally today, there may be a deficiency, because if there is one, just like I want to fill the open slots, I want to provide more services to meet the demand that's going unmet. But I have not heard that our service response times are increasing, and I don't know that our demand for service in terms of calls is actually going up. So if you can highlight where the operational gap is today, I certainly would be more comfortable supporting this.
I, I certainly don't have the numbers in front of me, as far as our response times, uh, as of this, this year. Uh, but I can tell you, as of last year, our calls for service went up about a thousand calls for service annually, uh, from twenty-three to twenty-four.
So, if I may?
Yes.
Um, okay, I guess in the discussion, in the briefing, this is taking a turn, so I'm, I'm trying to grasp, I, I want to understand this correctly. This money is grant money?
Yes, sir.
Portion of it, it's a, it covers up to forty-eight thousand of-
Forty-eight, it's forty-eight percent of an officer's salary.
Sorry, sorry, forty-eight percent, you're right.
With some fringe tied in there.
For three, for hiring three police officers over a five-year period? So it doesn't necessarily have to be-
Up to three, we could just do with one.
Okay, in a five-year period.
We have a choice to move up to, we applied for up to three.
In a, again, in a five-year period?
Yes, sir.
So it could be on year five that we decide to do this?
Well, we, no, we would have to execute within, by year three, in order to maintain-
Okay, years, yeah. Okay, by year three.
We could, we could also apply for an extension. I mean, you, so if, if we get to the point where we're having difficulties hiring bodies, which we have had-
We have.
We can ask, we can ask DOJ for an extension on, on the grant.
Okay, all right, but, um, I'm sorry, I'm just, I want to get my, my point and be done. Um, so we have fifty-one officers right now. This pertains to anybody over fifty-one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so where I find that, I don't know how we're gonna meet this, is that how many officers do we have right now in the drop, and that we're gonna lose in twenty-six?
Four, at a minimum.
So we would have to first replace those four, to then get to these additional three.
Unless we hired somebody while we had full staffing at fifty-one, that we could hold onto them.
There's a strategy, obviously.
Well, but there's a strategy that, obviously, you hold on, you have the grant money, you don't need to use it till year three, and then you wait, obviously in twenty-six, some of these officers are gonna come off. Uh, whatever, there's ways that you can do it. So, my question to the Mayor is, how, and please, I, I really don't know the answer to this, so I'm asking you, because you, you know, how is this affecting, that if the property tax happens, and I saw, and I've read everything that you've said about, that we have to fully fund, um, uh, the police at, you know, year twenty-six, or fiscal year twenty-six or twenty-seven, how does this of increase our current number that we just approved?
So, as I, as I understand the perspective law, right, and Mr. Rival, and the Manager can correct me, we approve this grant today, we are going to make a revision to our budget, right, in the mid-year at some level. So the TO is gonna, if we're gonna make the decision to hire one officer in this fiscal year, we're gonna have to increase the TO to, from fifty-one to fifty-two.
But we don't have to, right?
And we're gonna, we're going to, we may not hire the person, but, I mean, we need to, we need to create the budget authority to hire the person. We're adopting the grant, with the grant, we're committing the money to do this.
Why don't we wait till twenty-seven, or twenty-eight?
Again, I think, I, there is a strategy here, the, my bigger problem, okay, this is, in my opinion, a process of fail, of, of, of process failure, right? Because we should have had this conversation in the context, not only the Police Department, where there's a grant opportunity, which we all want to hire, and make sure that our communities are safe, and well protected. I want to meet what the service demand is today, and be prepared to meet it in the future. But we also are operating in a broader context, where these decisions are going to constrain our ability to invest resources in other parts of our operation. And, you know, when I had the con, when I was the, again, the turn in the punchbowl, saying, do we really want to hire an events leader? And poor Nicole is sitting there, and I know she's, this time of the year, she's dragging her butt around town, because she's got an event every single week, because she's working that hard. I'm the one saying, maybe we should hold back. And little did I know, that one of the other choices was, well, we may have the opportunity to bring on three cops. I think I would have made a very different decision about onboarding five non-police personnel, right? In that context, knowing that we had the possibility of hiring three officers, right? I would have said, you know what, maybe we should reserve some funding, so that we, and not commit to those bodies, because you know what happens in the world? Because I've lived this world in two thousand nine, when I was the Chief of Staff to Mayor, and we had to reduce a budget that was four hundred and fifty million dollars at the time, by a hundred and fifty million dollars, right? The last people in are always the first people out, and in the world that we're going into potentially, we're not gonna have the choice of firing officers, right? We're gonna have to fire non-police department personnel, right? And I don't like, in my own practice, or in this, in this business, I don't want to be making commitments to people about their lives without that kind of predictability. And so, again, the Manager doesn't understand the nexus, we talked about it on Friday during my brief, is, I see this as a continuum about hiring, whether it's PD or staff, right? My problem with this item is, we never talked about it in the course of the budget, and this is gonna require a budget modification, right?
Well, may or may not, may or may not.
It's not gonna require-
How is it not gonna require a budget modification?
What I want to know, it's, may or may, are we definitely making a budget change, or maybe we're making-
Guys, I don't know why we applied for a grant we didn't intend to prosecute the opportunity on. That doesn't make any strategic sense.
I'm sorry, I, I just, if, if we were to hire an officer, we would don't need to make a budget change. We're gonna have, uh, positions that are gonna go below our, our funded, we're gonna have salary savings. We can carry this one hire that we have above and beyond, because we're gonna have people that are gonna leave, and so-
Correct.
And, and, and the issue of hiring, knowing this information of budget to hire three officers, what I'm saying is, I was not recommending that, even if we had the grant then, that we would hire three officers, because we couldn't, and we didn't need them all in year one. So this is a scaled approach, but, but if it's a point of contention, I happily withdraw this item, and, and, and I think, I think it'd be appropriate, so I, this is my item, I'm withdrawing the item, and the Commission can bring it back as you see fit.
But I don't know why we're at that point.
It's, it's, because there's been a lot of things said that are not necessarily accurate, and leading up to this conversation-
What is not accurate?
I am, I'm, I'm gonna finish my, my statement, Mr. Mayor, okay? Because it's gonna be my last statement today. And, and leading up to this, the lack of conversation, uh, based on, on the concerns, and not even communicating those to me, I think it's, it's a completely, uh, failure in communication, and an issue, if I would know that it was such a hard-burn issue, I would have had open ears to it. I didn't know the extent of this till right now.
Sir, that's not true, and again, we had a meeting with, where your Deputy Manager was in the room, and so was another, another Director, two Directors in the room. I said, you're gonna be surprised by the item I have an issue with on this agenda, it was this one, for these reasons, so-
All the research you did, and all these things about all the three positions I got hired, never did you have that conversation with me.
No.
Never. So, if you want to have that conversation, I'm happy to have it. If you want to talk process, I'm happy to have it. So, I don't think that that's the type of conversation that we should have. If you were so concerned about it, I'd be happy to entertain and listen, and tell you what we did and why, and maybe you disagree. But the fact that I'm getting surprised by your disappointment and anger on this issue is beyond my comprehension, and I wasn't even given the courtesy to have this conversation with you. So, having said that, I withdraw the item, I don't want it to be a point of contention.
We don't, we don't need to withdraw the item, the, the rest of the Board wants to approve it, I have to make a decision whether I want to approve it or not. My only, my, my, my question to you on Friday, was I want to understand the operational need. I still, we, we're speaking generalities, I don't understand what the goals are in terms of staffing the department long-term, with all these things happening, we haven't had that conversation. I don't understand what the operational need is today. I have concerns about our ability to carry these costs into the future. I think they're legitimate concerns, given the environment we're operating in, and yes, I think that they impact other parts of the budget, because of those constraints, and I do not want to have this Board's hands tied. And again, it's not, it's not because we don't, I don't want more officers, right? It's not that, I'm trying, like, you know, as I said before, acting conservatively here, I think is a conversation worth happening. Now, I'm one person, I chair the meeting, I have a big freaking mouth, clearly. So, maybe everyone thinks that I, you know, I don't rule the roost here, Mr. Manager. It's a Board of five, so if this, if the Board wants to act on the item, I'm happy to entertain a motion, I've said my piece. You know, again, I'm not surprised why it's, why you're, you're surprised by my frustration with the item, because it was expressed very directly in, in the briefing we had at eight-thirty in the morning on Friday. So, you know, this is where we are, it's fine, we'll figure it out, it'll be one issue, and we'll move past it, as we have with anything else we've disagreed on in the past as well. But again, I just want to tell my, my colleagues, in, in three short years, we add these three positions, it's sixteen positions, four of which are cops, right? It's over a million dollars in recurring payroll, not counting for the, not counting for the indirect expenses associated with these positions. And I'll just tell you, we talk about priorities, and you mentioned all these competing things, right? Again, I'm not saying this is not a wise place to invest money, but, you know, I don't understand, this is going to impact the TO at some point, where we had one position this year and two next. We're gonna go from fifty-one officers to fifty-two, and fifty-two to fifty-four, to complete the grant requirements. And the language in the bills, which we are all acutely aware of, says, you're locked into your numbers from twenty-six or twenty-seven, whichever is higher. That's the basis of my concern, if I'm crazy, if I'm a worrywart, this is the way I'm wired, this is the reason I think I'm in this job, is to worry about what happens tomorrow. And I apologize if I'm expressing myself in a way that is unmeasured, which I think is atypical of me, but I think it's a legitimate, legitimate concern, Mr. Manager, and if you don't understand the nexus between the two, we can have further conversation about it. But this is why I characterize this as a process failure, because if the grant was applied for in June, and we have a workshop in July, it would have been good to have a side conversation about, there is this opportunity, like, we talk about borrowing here, right, which as a corollary, I'll tell you that the million dollars in recurring payroll translates into seventeen million dollars in borrowing capacity, right? So, with that, I'm gonna close, yes, ma'am.
I would like clarity, and I don't know if it comes from you, or from you, or from the team over here. If we get this grant, and it's just sitting there, and next year we hire one officer, and then we don't hire anymore, we are not responsible, I know, but we are not responsible for hiring an additional two, we are not forced to hire a total of three in the five years.
Correct.
So it's just a pot of money sitting there, in the case that we do.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's actually reimbursable, correct?
Yeah, but then-
It's not a pot of money, we never get the money.
Yeah, unless, I, I, I get that part. So, Mr. Mayor, my question to you is, how are you viewing this so differently to me, where I see it as, if we need it, we're gonna need it anyway? And I understand what you're saying, when we get to fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-seven, sixty-five, whatever the number is, we're, no matter what, we're gonna be stuck with it, that's what we're seeing in the language. I understand that part. I'm just not understanding how that is translating to the possibility of-
So, I'll, I'll answer your question, because I don't want to be dis, I'll answer your question, but let me recognize Kip Sherkaya, who's been waiting to say something that apparently had not recognized, but I'll get to your question.
Well, what, what I was gonna say, and this is my, my opinion here, is that I don't think none of us really disagree with the opportunity to maybe have police, it's not really gonna affect our budget if we don't want it to, right? But I will say that I, I think I understand what you're saying, Mayor, is that systematically, there's an issue where what we should request as a Board, is when we go through the budget season, that we calculate and incorporate any grants that we have allocated that we're looking at. So we just finally got a sheet this past week, of all the different grants that we're attaching, right? So, I, I, I don't, maybe I'm being a little bit oversimplistic here, but it's just a process thing that we need to fix for next year. I don't think budget lea- I don't think budgetly, we're going to be in a position that we have to take that money. I think it's systematic where, in the budget season next year, let's incorporate the grants, the possibilities. We understand, and that's a much broader picture of what we can and can't do, possibility of getting grants for one thing or another. And it just makes our life easier when we start determining the budget season for fiscal year twenty-six. I know it's oversimplistic, but I think that's the issue.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the issue. I think the other issue is, to answer your question, I've lived this movie before, right? Two thousand and four, working as a chief of staff for a mayor, you know, you realize that you've hired sixty cops in the city of Miami on cops grants. And you have a structural deficit in the department because you don't have, you've never set your budget up to fund the balance of the salaries and indirect benefits, right? And so what happens is it consumes opportunities to invest in other parts of the operation. And again, I think there is a, 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 a real political sensitivity around this issue. Who wants to vote against hiring more cops? Nobody, right? And then you, and that's in a regular context. But in a regular context, if you find yourself in a budget year where you, revenues are down, right? You can make the decision to trim the department, right? All I'm saying is, in this context, we may not even have that choice. So the, the grant documents all say, he's going to keep the cop for one year. I mean, I've read the FAQ and all the tax information, right? Had a conversation with the Grants Director of the City of Miami, so I'm recalling what the rules are. And we had a conversation with Teresa, who advised us on this grant here, you know? Trying to understand, and I, and I see the opportunity, but I also see the, the danger of make a commitment to people. And we're going to honor the commitment to the cops, but we're going to break our commitment if we find ourselves in that, in that budgetary situation. By the way, all the fun stuff we're talking about in that world goes away as well. Park, park investments. So it's just the tip of the iceberg, this issue. So again, I was just surprised that something as significant as this, because we've been talking about, we've been talking about cops and getting resources to hire more cops and making sure we're getting people through the academy, would be an opportunity that would not go mentioned to us in the course of the budget conversation, when we're talking about adding more people to the other side of the table of organization. That's why I was caught flat-footed. The environment heightens my anxiety about it. You know, again, we can, we can, we can, we can, we can hire all of them or none of them. That's a decision. At this point, I've said way too much. Is there a motion to adopt the grant or not?
Wait, I have, I have a, I have a, the forty-eight percent, is that for the first three years?
Three years.
Right? It covers the salary for the first three. So I, um, so to the mayor was saying that we hired, you know, for example, um, you know, we, we hired employees on this budget here, but the difference is that on those, we cover full costs. Where here, we're covering fifty-two percent only, not.
Yeah, but we're, but again, I go back, I go back to my original question. What is the operational demand today?
My question is, on the TO, you have that one, one that cop on the TO, is it the fifty-two percent that goes? Or is it the full salary that?
It's the full salary.
Well, yeah, but the grant, the grant, where the full, the full salary isn't on, for us to pay, it shouldn't be in our, it's not in our budget. We have a grant for forty-eight percent.
Okay.
We have a, but we have a budget that has all sorts of revenues that balances the budget. Those revenues go away. The grant is revenue. So, but the cost of the cost, right? So that's, that's how I see the analysis. Again, we're, we're talking about questions that we don't know the answers to. Because how that provision gets interpreted, we don't know, right? It could be, get interpreted exactly the way you're saying it, net of grant allocation from the local government. We don't know the answers. That's also part of my concern. Yes, sir.
Chief, a question for you. Moving forward for next fiscal year, is it a possibility that we have a little bit more systematic way of understanding what our needs are going to be moving forward? For example, I just spoke to you today earlier about more of a need, maybe, of having police that are going to do enforcement on parking traffic issues. Where I'm seeing, when I know I can talk to a lot of forums, we have an issues with, right? So if we have the ability to increase or rearrange some of our budget, budgeted police to enforce traffic violations, not to mention it also brings revenue, um, that's something that I would be interested to see what your position would be as we start, continue to allocate less from maybe service calls or, you know, um, issues with safety to more of a, more, I, I don't know what the word is. But I think you understand what I'm trying to say.
Yes, sir. I, I, we apply for grants all the time when they come available, whether it's an F.D.O. grant, a federal grant, a state grant of some sort. We try and save, uh, the commission, the city, our, our, our customers' money. So those grants come up at various times throughout the year. And, you know, we were, we were recently awarded one, I think it was thirty or forty thousand dollars for aggressive driving. And that's, that's a huge number to be able to, to, you know, pay overtime rates and to buy equipment. But some of that stuff, we don't know when it's going to come available, when we're going to get awarded it. And this grant to, to, you know, go back is, we applied for the grant in June. We have no idea whether we're going to get it or not. And it would have been OBE overcome by events, because you would have already voted for your budget year prior to us even knowing whether or not we got the grant. So there are some, there are some nuances with timing of some of these things. Can we keep you more informed? Yes, we could definitely keep you more informed as to when we're applying for grants and what those grant amounts may or may not be.
And that's, that's totally understandable, Chief. But we have made decisions with an understanding that we might get a grant here and there. So I think just having that information always there when we're in budget season is just that, it'll help a lot. That's all.
Yes, sir.
You recognize, yes, sir. Do you have a call comment?
Thank you.
I'm going to move the motion.
Okay. Oh, and I, I have a request. It doesn't have to do with moving the motion. Do you want to move the motion first and then I'll make the request? For information, yeah. I'd like to understand, and I don't know if that's you or, or the city manager or even Alfredo in finance. I'd like to understand how we're running our metrics for police officer ratios. You know, do we have one police officer for every twelve people? Do we, whatever that is. I don't need the answer now. I just like the information so that now we have Avalon Bay come online, like, like you just said, we have Avalon Bay. We have, you know, Vox two, we have Alta coming up across the street. So I completely understand what the mayor is saying, that we're seeing, you know, crime levels down. But I want to understand our metric irregardless of what type of crime is going on in the city.
Well, to add to that, I think we've already gone through that process, kinda, where we did the annexation numbers.
Yes, sir.
And tried to do that with police. So we've already started that process. So if you can just nail it down, just let us know.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Mayor, with that, may I move the motion?
You can.
I'll move the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Kai, a second by Commissioner Bonich. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Kaiye.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bonich.
Yes, with, you want to make a condition?
Um, if, if you, if you'd like, I, just procedurally, let's rescind your second. And then if you could ask the maker of the motion to accept your modification.
Okay.
What's the modification?
The modification is that if, if and when this is going to kick into play, that we are notified ahead of time. So that if there are conversations or changes that need to happen in the operating budget, that we are able to do them. Because I think that the point that the mayor is making is also very important. So.
I agree. Wait, hold on. So from an operational perspective, is it going to move monies around?
No.
No, no, no.
No, no. From an operational perspective, when we're going to hit and the button for Officer number fifty-two, that we are notified.
In this fiscal year.
In any fiscal year.
No, but that's not, so if we're going to go to fifty-two in the fiscal budget, we would decide that if we want to do that at the budgeting season. The only per, the only way that we cannot do that is in this fiscal year, which I don't even think that the grant's available for this grant fiscal year anyway. So we would be privileged to the information of adding one said policeman at budget season.
So I, I, I just, I appreciate what clearly is an attempt to assuage my concern. So thank you. I think, I think.
I did a bad job of it?
No, no, you're not doing a bad job. I think to Commissioner Kaiya's point, if it happens in the context of fiscal year twenty-seven, it should come through the regular budget process in the regular order. If it happens in fiscal year twenty-six and we're going to add a position above fifty-one, my expectation is we get a, a mid-year modification showing a change to the TO. Whether it impacts the total amount of funding or not, depends on whether someone's left or whatever the other issues are. But there has to at least be in my mind, a TO modification to show the initial position. So, and whether there's an additional amount of money, I, I would imagine it would come as part of that modification. Mr. Manager, Mr. Riverall, am I correct?
When you approve a budget, you, you approve a line item of salaries and benefits? And, and, and so I had said earlier that if, if, if this was approved and we reached full staffing and we wanted to trigger the first one, that we would carry that within this budget, because we're going to have savings from people that leave. And so that ebb and flow, we would stay within that line item of salary and benefits. So that's what I was trying to describe, why it would not necessarily trigger. And if you disagree, jump in.
But it would, but it doesn't require, trigger, it doesn't require a modification to the TO in terms of the number of employees in the department?
The budget book has a head count, but when you approve, what you're approving is the, the, the monetary aspect. You know, if, it's not my interpretation and our position that you are necessarily approving a head count. You're approving a, a dollar amount that allows for that. So in the end of the fiscal year, if we were to hire plus one, we would not go over that line item, because we're using salary savings because of the ebb and flow of, of.
Which I wouldn't care.
The ebb and flow of vacancies. So.
I, I thought we approved.
Head count.
Head count and the number. So, again.
I'll, I'll leave that under interpretation.
Yeah, I, I thought it was both. So I thought it was both, but again.
It could be. I'm just, that's how I interpret it. I'll leave it to.
It's all right. It doesn't, it's not, it doesn't, I think the point being that to your, to your requested modification, we should have that information in the course of a modification. But maybe not with respect, if we stay within the current budget authority of the manager, he's saying it doesn't require a TO modification. We'll, we'll discuss that another day. So I don't, I don't think the modification is necessary. So if you want to keep the motion in its regular posture.
Okay.
We have the first by Commissioner, uh, sorry.
Kaiye.
Kaiye. And the second by Commissioner Bonich. I think we had an affirmative vote from Commissioner Kaiye, from Commissioner Rodriguez. And we are waiting on a vote from Commissioner Bonich.
Mayor Fernandez.
No.
Item passes three, one.
Wait, before we leave, I want to say.
Oh, Commissioner, Commissioner comments.
So, may I go? All right. Happier news.
You used your glasses.
So cue, if I may, I, I got seventy, we, today, the, the food bank, all the food was given away. And we serviced seventy-five to a hundred people. So that's a good job on, on all of us.
Thank you, Dr.
Dr. Scott. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Scott, for putting us in, or in contact with Care for Miami. And thank you to Care for Miami for coming through so fast, by the way. So, all right, um, thank you to them. On another note, I just want to advise the commission and staff. Today I had, uh, what I thought was an unexpected, amazing meeting with Miami Dade College. Got a tour of their facilities. They have a whole new AI, cybersecurity, financial, culinary, at Wolfson. So I'm currently, um, beginning works to, they will provide us, or our residents and staff for free upskilling certifications in AI. So in, in cybersecurity, in financing, in culinary arts, in IT services. So these are something that we can offer to our residents that are willing to come here and do workshops to explain to them how to apply for free. They get their first year and their first certification free. So this is not only offering to our residents and staff, because it's open, even any of us who want to do AI certification. Hey, you never know. It's the future. Um, it'll, it'll, it'll be free to them. And, you know, it's an opportunity for jobs that are going to be relative in the future and high-paying jobs. And if they've, they choose to take it to a further level, the college will help them with funding where it will be minimal year two and three. But they can go all the way up to a full bachelor's and, and getting, uh, AAs and bachelors with Wolfson. So that's something that we're, I, we're, I'm going to start working on. It won't be till quarter one of next year, because crazy season is starting soon. So the holiday season. So just wanted to give you guys a heads up that that's something that I'm working on and.
I'm sure you're still on that point. Just something for you to think about as you're talking about certification opportunities. They do have a program on OSHA, initial OSHA, I forget the, the number, but there's a OSHA certification standard for construction workers.
Thirty, ten and thirty.
Ten and thirty. So that would be something that would be great in connection with.
I don't know if they do that. I'll ask. But that's a great.
They have done in the past. So I, so I mentioned, some clients have worked with them on.
Oh, really?
On providing upskilling in connection with, um, development projects that are happening in certain areas.
And, and, uh, the, the, the head of Pedro, which is the head of their AI department, is willing to come here and train staff on, you know, Copilot, Gemini, ChatGPT, uh, and, and invite residents and whoever wants to come and just start learning how to implement AI into, into your personal lives. So there'll be many, there'll be workshops and seminars and things like that, that we're going to be, I'll, hopefully be working with Francesca to, and, and Miami Dade College to put those together for next year. That's it. Thank you.
Did any of you guys go to Miami Dade?
No.
I'm the only one?
Yeah. Oh, and I, and I will state, which is cool, Chief, that, um, their cybersecurity, um, school, I guess, is one of six in the state that's certified by NSA, which I was very impressed by, very impressed by. So, all right.
Thank you for the reports. Congratulations. Okay, thank you, everyone. We stand in recess, adjourned, excuse me.